Good evening, guests. The time is 6:16. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the special meeting of the Emeryville City Council. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Present.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bauders?
Here. Members, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda. So moved?
Seconded.
I have a motion from Member Pats and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats? Council-
Yes, sorry.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bauders?
Aye. The agenda is approved. Public comment for items not on the agenda. We will have an opportunity to comment on a later set of agenda items we have, but if you wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda this evening, you can do so now, seeing none. Special orders of the day. Members, I would like to invite you all to join us in the front row. In front of each of you is a bouquet, and please take that to your seats with you. There's a lot of electrical hardware here today. Okay. Well, so, good evening and welcome to this special meeting, as we're hoping to make a tradition here in Emeryville. Every so often, we have a special meeting to celebrate something here in the city, and March is Women's History Month, and we really need to take a moment because women don't happen to be a small segment of our population. In fact, they're a pretty reasonable-sized group in our population. I'm very happy to see a lot of women I know here today. And what we're going to do this evening is, we're going to begin, I'm going to introduce Arianna Jukes, who's here from Senator Nancy Skinner's office. So those of you who attended our Black History Month celebration, Tony Thurman's office came, our Assembly member, and talked about the importance of that month and the significance it has for the African-American community. And so, we thought, what better thing to do than to invite our senator's office to speak about the significance of Women's History Month? So with no further ado, I'll introduce Arianna. Come on up and say some things to us.
Hello. Excuse my, if I get out of breath, I'm coming off of a cold. I'm not doing a Fran Drescher impersonation, I swear. Thank you, Mayor Bauders and the City of Emeryville, for having me. My name is Arianna Jukes, and I'm humbled to be here on behalf of one of my heroes for Women's History Month, which is Senator Nancy Skinner. I know she wanted to be here today, but she's stuck up in Sacramento. So when the mayor asked me if I could provide some remarks, I immediately freaked out, and I was like, "Me? Ten minutes? I can't do that." No, 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 no. I just come, sometimes I present certificates, sometimes I sit in the back and say hello. But it was in that moment of self-doubt and uncertainty that I remembered why we have a Women's History Month. It's so that when a mayor of a city asks you, a young woman, to speak, you say, "Yeah, sure, I'll do it." So, here I am. We are in a really confusing time, I don't know if that's the right word to put, but, you know, today, I think it was the Weinstein Company declared bankruptcy. So, you know, we're seeing repercussions for the sexual harassment and assault that's been happening, and finally, we are... Children, yay! And yet, while we have, we're seeing all of this, we still have a president who is notorious for his misogyny and, you know, assaults against women. And we have two fabulous women senators, hello! We have Diane Feinstein and Kamala Harris, and yet despite, and then we have a lot of female representation in government, but yet in the state legislature, we still only have 25 percent representation. We haven't had a woman governor yet, and we all know how it went when we tried to have a woman president. So, I think the list can go on. I could talk about how we've made progress and how we have yet to still, women don't get paid the same as men, and our bodies are regulated more than guns are, and I can talk, I can go on, and then none of this is new. In fact, it's kind of old. So in times that are really overwhelming, like these, I try to look for beacons of hope. And the first place I look is the state legislature. So I'm so fortunate to work for a state senator who's working tirelessly to right the wrongs of our past and ensure that women do have a place at the table. So we have SB 1190, which is to compensate those who were forced, that underwent forced sterilization in the 1900s. So California had this system where they would sterilize folks who were seen unfit to reproduce, and so survivors, we still have survivors today, and most of those are women, and if you were Latina, you are more likely to be sterilized. We also have SB 982, let's, 984, which is to mandate that all boards in government have 50 percent woman representation. Because we, the senator believes that if we, we have to have a seat at the table even if government, if we want to make this thing happen. And I can go on about what else is happening, and you can feel free to talk to me afterwards about other bills that are on the table, and we could talk about supporting them. But that's one way. And then I look to my heroes. I look to Audrey Lord and Ruth Bader Ginsburg and Michelle Obama, we miss her. And I look to the young heroes we have today, like the local activist, or not local, but the young activist Emma Gonzalez from Parkland, who spoke out so eloquently after the Parkland shootings. And then I also look to this room, and I see Councilmember Medina, and I see Martinez, and like that there is hope, and there's people and women out there who are trying their best to support us in government and to make sure that going forward, we do have a say at the table, and we do have the foundation to continue on for the, for pro, for social progress. So, on behalf of the senator, we thank you for hosting this night tonight. Women's history is really important, so let's keep honoring it. Thank you.
Thank you, Arianna, for those remarks. And so, next, we would like to, we have some, some students and kids who need seats, and I want to make some seats available. So I'm going to ask several people to move to the front row. And so I'd like to first ask Tiffany Johnson, where are you, Tiffany? Would you please sit next to Councilmember Pats? Betsy Cooley, would you please come up here and sit next to Vice Mayor Medina? Over here, Betsy. Pick a seat, any seat. Gail Donaldson? Oh yeah, Gail. Would you please sit down by Scott Donahue over there at the end? Sharon Wilcher? Would you please sit with Councilmember Martinez? And then I would like to ask if Courtney Carheuer and Tiffany Sprague, would you please sit in those two seats in the front? So, we are going to continue a tradition, come on in! Come on in. We have, in fact, I see one seat up there, but it's just been taken. Oh, maybe not. Come on in, we will have more chairs next time. We have one seat over there. Yep, everyone, make yourself at home, there's a seat there. Thank you for sharing. So, we, we want to take a moment to honor some women who do some outstanding things in our community. So for those who weren't here during Black History Month, you're going to be a little nervous and surprised, but I promise, only good things will happen. So, once again, thank you to our city clerk, who, the floral, the setup of everything you see here, these amazing proclamations are all the product of Sherri Hart's work. So I'd like to invite Councilmember Pats and Tiffany Johnson to stand up here first. And Tiffany, what we asked everybody to do, the, each council member worked with me independently to identify someone they wanted to nominate to be recognized during Women's History Month, and Councilmember Pats has nominated you. And so, this is the proclamation that the city has to recognize you, in recognizing Tiffany Johnson's contributions to education on the occasion of Women's History Month 2018. Whereas Tiffany Johnson has been a fourth-grade teacher at Annie Yates Elementary for 11 years, and whereas Ms. Johnson recognizes that the fourth grade is a pivotal year in a child's education, and uses a growth mindset and positive attitude to get the best from her students. And whereas, as an example of an empowering growth mindset is "I can't" versus "I can't do this yet," and whereas Ms. Johnson encourages students to take an ownership role in their learning process, and believes that in order to be successful, those students must have the support of parents and teachers who are equally invested. And whereas each year, her students are CHAMPs, which stands for College-Headed and Mighty-Proud Students, that's right, and are encouraged to develop into expressive, independent, and critical-thinking scholars. And whereas Ms. Johnson never forgets that family involvement is key in to guiding CHAMPs toward mastery of the grade-level content and becoming outstanding members of their communities. And whereas in 2013, Ms. Johnson, in collaboration with Alameda County Fire and the Alameda County Firefighters Association Local 55, played a key role in organizing the back-to-school supply drive in order to help underserved Annie Yates students and their families to receive school supplies. And whereas, this was significant, since Ms. Johnson is aware that there are times when teachers must spend their own money to provide basic school supplies to their students, and because of her leadership, students of every socioeconomic level have been positively impacted. And whereas Annie Yates is in its third year of partnership with Mills Teacher Scholars in building a school-wide teacher inquiry community, and Ms. Johnson is among the 35 teacher scholars who are using their deeper understanding of student learning to achieve equitable outcomes for their students. And whereas Ms. Johnson was an active participant and a strong voice in the community input and planning phase of the Emeryville Center of Community Life Project, attending multiple planning sessions and community, community meetings, and providing a voice to teachers and the needs of students. Now therefore be it resolved, that as mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby thank Tiffany Johnson for her continuing support of youth education, and be it further resolved that during the celebration of Women's History Month 2018, and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby recognize Tiffany Johnson for her service to the people of Emeryville and the commitment she shows to the children of our community every day, proclaimed on this 20th day of March 2018 by the mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. So, I, as a custom last time, I did invite each honoree to speak. So Ms. Johnson, do you have any interest in saying anything? It's your, this is, this is Women's History Month. You know how to take a podium, this is your class.
So the first thing? No, I'm kidding. I just have to say, I'm really grateful for being recognized today. It's an honor to be here, it's an honor, it's an honor to serve my students on a daily basis, and to try to be an agent of, agent of change in a community that's very small, but we reach out very far. We have students from Saliandro, Richmond, all over, coming to our school to be educated. And it is a public school, and I'm very proud of that, because public schools were not always there for everyone. And I am proud to be a teacher, I'm able to teach all children, yellow, black, white, polka dot, every color, and I am inspired on a daily basis by my ancestry, by the fight that they had to even just be able to learn their ABCs and read a book. And I want to make sure that I always keep in mind that our students are, number one, and anything that I do, anything, even being here right now, for me, it's kind of weird because teachers don't get acknowledged for it, you know? And we do a lot of stuff, we do a lot, we wear a lot of hats. Number one, it's the babies, we're doing it for the babies, and that's where my heart is. I'm really appreciative that you all even see that, and I love all the teachers, I'm inspired by all my teachers, Ms. Miles, Ms. Ren, 20-something years of teaching, it's a hard job, so I really appreciate you all for honoring us. I love my kids, I see some of them here. And I just, I love my families, I just, I love all of you, you are my family, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Councilmember Martinez and Sharon Wilcher. So Sharon, Councilmember Martinez nominated you as a woman who she wanted to recognize in our community, and the following resolution is from us to you. Whereas Sharon Wilcher graduated from St. Mary's College with a BS in Biology in 1967, and is a Notre Dame grad, I, I'm sorry, I've read the year. That's like a faux pas in Women's History Month, isn't it? Yeah, sorry. Oh, that was 87, sorry. As a Notre Dame grad, I love St. Mary's College across the street, friends. And whereas, as a young woman, Ms. Wilcher applied her degree to various jobs in Europe and at Stanford University. But after some years of work in the field of science, she returned to New Hope, Pennsylvania, where she opened an arts and crafts gallery with her sister, because it was the 1970s and crafts were a big deal. And whereas, after a few years of working with her sister, bringing together people from all over the country who were involved in the crafts movement, Ms. Wilcher traveled to California where she became one of the founding members of the 45th Street Artists Cooperative, making her one of the true pioneers who transformed the city from an industrial past to a burgeoning arts community, all the richer for its remarkable number of artists and residents. And whereas, as the preeminent advocate for the Emeryville Arts Community, Ms. Wilcher holds leadership positions that have truly shaped the growth of the city's remarkable art scene. And whereas Ms. Wilcher wrote the grant to the California Endowment for the Arts to fund the Artists in the Schools Program at Emory Unified School District, launching decades of local artist participation with Emeryville students, the works of whom can be seen in abundance to this very day here at City Hall. And whereas, as the arts community has not escaped the gender inequality that plagues other social institutions, Ms. Wilcher helped pave the way for the 45th Street Artists Co-op to be composed of an equal amount of men and women artists who live in residence. And whereas Ms. Wilcher's advocacy for artists living and working in Emeryville has always included promoting the work of women artists, young and old. And whereas, through her participation in the city's Art Purchase Award and Bus Shelter Temporary Art Programs, Ms. Wilcher has put a spotlight on 24 local women artists. And whereas, Ms. Wilcher has done extraordinary work in attracting important women from the art world as guest curators for the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts. And whereas, this is the second of two City Council Proclamations appreciating Ms. Wilcher in the span of two years. Because her contributions are really too numerous to contain in one such sitting, now therefore be it resolved, that as the mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby thank Ms. Wilcher for her continuing support of women in the arts. And be it further resolved that during this celebration of Women's History Month 2018, and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby recognize Sharon Wilcher for her service to the people of Emeryville and the years of tireless advocacy she has given to the benefit of our entire community, proclaim this 20th day of March 2018 by the mayor and the City Council members of the City of Emeryville.
Well, if I wasn't overwhelmed before, now, I really am. I'm not sure where all this information was gathered from, but that was quite, and it's pretty amazing what you can do with a degree in biology, but anyway. Wow. You know, I, I've lived in Emeryville now for over half of my life, and this is my community. I love it. I love working for and with my neighbors at the Emeryville Artists Cooperative, and advocating for the arts in the community, whether it's to residential community, the business community, visitors to the city. I really am, I'm, I'm not quite speechless, but I, I almost am. This is, I'm honored to be here with all the women who are being honored tonight. I want to thank Diane and Ally and all the City Council, but especially the women tonight, all the women who are in the room. And I'm sure there's more that I'd like to say, but I'm, I'm really, I'm so touched, and I thank you so much for acknowledging the part that the arts play in our community. Thank you.
Councilmember Donahue and Gail Donaldson. Proclamation recognizing the contributions of Gail Donaldson to the City of Emeryville during Women's History Month 2018. Whereas, Gail Donaldson is a shining example of someone whose life has been guided by the principles of and commitment to community service, and whose contributions are worthy of honor on the occasion of the City of Emeryville's recognition of Women's History Month. And whereas, Ms. Donaldson attained her JD at Hastings College of Law and later attended UC Berkeley, where she received her degree as a Master of Landscape Architecture in 1994. And whereas, Ms. Donaldson began her career for progressive causes in the 1970s, including working with and on behalf of the United Farm Workers Union. And whereas, as a lawyer, she spent 10 years litigating domestic violence cases, representing women who had experienced violence at the hands of a partner, and served as a board member for a safe place, a shelter in Oakland that provides programming and services to protect those in our community who experience domestic violence. And whereas, for the last 25 years, Ms. Donaldson has worked as a landscape architect and planner, and has helped to improve the quality of life of communities across Northern California. And whereas, Ms. Donaldson was appointed to the Planning Commission in Emeryville on January 17, 2006, and with a tenure of over 12 years, is currently Emeryville's longest-serving planning commissioner. And whereas, Ms. Donaldson is currently serving her third term as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and because of her background as a professional landscape architect and planner, provides the commission with specialized knowledge in urban infill, revitalization, and parkmaster planning, bringing an insightful design perspective to the commission. And whereas, Ms. Donaldson has been at the Planning Commission's representative on the Parks and Recreation Committee since its inception in October of 2012, and in that role has been a tireless advocate for parks in Emeryville, standing out as the champion on the Planning Commission for the development of the city's Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, as well as a Park and Recreation Facility Impact Fee to help fund its implementation. And whereas, having served as one of the Planning Commission's representatives on the General Plan and Zoning Update Steering Committee, Ms. Donaldson participated in the successful completion of a new general plan and planning regulations. Now therefore be it resolved, that as mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby thank Gail Donaldson for her dedicated service to the City of Emeryville, and be it further resolved that during the celebration of Women's History Month 2018, and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby recognize Gail Donaldson for her service to the people in the City of Emeryville and her commitment to the wellness of our community, proclaim this 20th day of March 2018 by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Emeryville.
Well, I am almost speechless myself. I just want to say that I have been really honored to be serving this community for all these years. I'm honored to be a part of a community that is expressing progressive values and that is really dedicated to making this a better place to live for all of its residents, and to moving our, moving our city forward. It's been a really interesting time to be on a planning commission with a city that's undergone so much change, and I'm honored to be recognized, and I'm honored to be serving in a long line of very progressive women that have been on the City Council of our town as well. So, I feel like I'm in good company, and I'm really honored and totally shocked.
Vice Mayor Medina and Ms. Cooley. Whereas Elizabeth, as you all know her, Betsy Cooley, has been an active participant working to improve nearly every aspect of the City of Emeryville for many years, and has offered thoughtful input on an incredible range of issues at public meetings. And it is appropriate to honor her contributions on the occasion of the City Council's recognition of Women's History Month. And whereas, Betsy Cooley has served on numerous community advisory and regional committees on behalf of the City of Emeryville, including, and I have to disclaim, it just says including, but it should probably say, but possibly not limited to? Because we kept digging, we're like, oh, she was on that? She was on that? She was on that? Including the Emeryville Transportation Management Association, the Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District, the Emeryville Parks and Recreation Committee, the Emeryville Housing Advisory Committee, the Emeryville Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, the Alameda County Advisory Commission on Aging, and the Emory Unified School District Measure J Citizens Oversight Committee. And whereas, having spoken on topics such as the budget, housing, transportation, and development, and the city's pedestrian bicycle plan at public meetings, among others, Ms. Cooley provides her astute, astute observations from a vantage point of an active, engaged resident within our community. And whereas, women make up the vast majority of our volunteer workforce here in Emeryville, and Ms. Cooley is an outstanding example of the excellence in volunteer, that volunteerism can represent, and the resourcefulness that members of the public can provide through civic engagement. And whereas, through her efforts, Ms. Cooley has modeled civic leadership to people of all ages across our community, demonstrating that any person can really make a difference in their community if they are committed to the values of listening, learning, asking, and volunteering. And whereas, Ms. Cooley can always be relied upon to provide encouragement and express gratitude to city staff for their efforts, and has been referred to at City Hall as, quote, "one of our favorite people." Now therefore be it resolved, that as mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, we hereby thank Betsy Cooley for her commitment to information sharing within our community, to the pursuit of civic engagement, and her willingness to give her time to make Emeryville a better place to live for all. And be it further resolved that during this celebration of Women's History Month 2018, and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the City of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby recognize Ms. Cooley for her service to the people of Emeryville and the years of tireless advocacy she has given for the benefit of our entire community, proclaim this 20th day of March 2018 by the mayor and the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Please join me.
I don't really like to speak in public, thank you. I'm really happy to share this with the other honorees, and it's really, just thank you very much.
So could Tiffany and Courtney please come up here? Whereas Tiffany Sprague and Courtney Carheuer, after learning that children in California's elementary schools receive on average just 30 to 60 minutes of science instruction per week, that many after-school science programs are too expensive or not well-run, and that females are generally underrepresented in the fastest-growing and most lucrative industries of science, technology, engineering, and math, or as we know it, STEM, these two mothers of young daughters decided to do something about the status of girls and women in STEM. And whereas, as experienced professionals in nonprofit management, Tiffany and Courtney, through a grassroots effort, co-founded Scientific Adventures for Girls in January 2014, a nonprofit organization that provides after-school and summer programs for young children with a special emphasis on girls and disadvantaged youth. And whereas, SAFG's mission, as envisioned by Tiffany and Courtney, is to keep girls engaged in STEM, leading them to professions in STEM fields, and make them into contributing members of the global community with a strong background in technology and science. And whereas, Tiffany and Courtney envisioned a space for girls that develop their natural curiosity, intuition, and creativity while they learn practical skills, and that connected them to the real-world applications through fun, hands-on activities, and a place that made it comfortable for girls to practice asking questions, to practice making predictions, experimenting, and collaborating with peers in a supportive, girls-only environment. And whereas, SAFG program at Annie Yates Elementary is an exciting place, where Emeryville's girls from K through 5th grade can learn, explore, grow, and develop a greater sense of self-worth because of the efforts of Tiffany- of self-worth because of the efforts of Tiffany and Courtney. And whereas, Tiffany and Courtney plan to expand the program further to add co-ed classes where boys and girls from all backgrounds can flourish alongside each other and have opportunities to collaborate and learn in a safe and respectful environment. And whereas, the mayor in nominating Tiffany and Courtney for this recognition further recognizes that our society is a better place when women lead, and supports the vision and leadership that Tiffany and Courtney are trying to develop in young girls into making them the leaders of our future. Now, therefore be it resolved that as the mayor of the city of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the city of Emeryville, I hereby thank Tiffany Sprague and Courtney Carheuer for their work toward creating a gender-equitable society where girls realize their full potential and are equipped with 21st-century skills. And be it further resolved that during the celebration of Women's History Month 2018 and on behalf of the City Council and the people of the city of Emeryville, the mayor does hereby recognize them for their service to the people of Emeryville, the children of Annie Yates School, and their commitment to this essential work. Proclaim this 20th day of March 2018 by the mayor and the City Council of the city of Emeryville.
This is quite a surprise and a huge honor. Thank you so much. Tiffany and I are, we started a little over four years ago, and one of our first schools that we were at was Annie Yates, and it was a huge, it's been so fun to be at that school. It's the school kind of where we try all of our new classes out before we take them to other schools around Oakland and Berkeley and the rest of the area. And we've had such a thrill watching the girls who've taken our class for, you know, for three or four years straight. I see a couple of faces here today of some of the girls in the classes. And that's kind of why we're doing it. Like Tiffany said, we're doing it for the babies, and I love seeing them grow and develop and just become really strong women and fall in love with STEM. So, I hope we'll be doing this for another, at least 20 years here, if not longer. So, thank you so much, and this is a huge honor.
Hi, can you see me? Most of the girls we serve are taller than I am. Anyway, again, I also want to thank Mayor Bowders for this great honor. It's a huge surprise. He just said, can you come by Tuesday at 6:15? I have a huge surprise for you, so I'm really, really surprised. I do want to thank the Emeryville School Unified District for supporting us. There is a huge gap in STEM careers, especially here in Silicon Valley and the Bay Area, and thank you for supporting our mission to really engage our young ones. I wanted to just recognize the girls that came here from Annie Yates to support us, and anyone that takes SAFG to stand up. Can you stand up? You can stand up. These are really. They've been taking their classes for a long time, and I guarantee you will see them 15 to 20 years from now doing great things. So, thank you.
So, could, one more time, could we please just give a round of applause for all our honorees? So, next I would like to invite, Women's History Month doesn't need to have a hearing, even though I might be the mayor, I don't need to run the meeting the whole time, that's the best part. So, I'm going to turn over the next couple of parts of the meeting to our two female council members. And so, first, I'm going to ask Councilmember Martinez to come up and say a few words. Rumor has it, and it's supported strongly by the fact that there's a large set of drums behind me, that we have two bands in the house. And, yes, and we are going to have an all-girl rock band performance tonight. And I'm not going to say anymore because I want Councilmember Martinez to, but I understand that Stargazers and Misak are here. And so, before we do that, I'm going to, and I'll just remind, anyone who wants to make a public comment, we will do that after the bands perform, so you haven't lost your chance if you want to come say something yourself. But without that, Diane, would you please come up?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our mayor for putting together this whole event, so, although you're not a woman, I am proud to have you as our mayor this year. So, thank you. So, next up, we do have some brief performances, and I have to apologize because I planned to bring earplugs for all of you, but I think they'll be gentle on us, right? First up, we've got the Stargazers, and you guys can come on and like start.
Your second.
Oh, second? Oh, okay. Let's have Misak up first. This is, both of these bands are put together through a nonprofit called Bay Area Girls' Rock Camp, which empowers young ladies to form a band and learn how to play a song over a set period of time, and we get to be the beneficiaries of all of their hard work. So, I'm going to bring the band right on. Our first band is Misak.
She said she's Kayla, by the way.
Yeah, that's what she said. Cool.
I was walking down the street, know I feel pretty good. The only problem was I was kinda in the hood. Then a guy walked to me, he said, "How you doing, girl?" I walked away, not him. I kinda need a hurl. If you ever been through this, don't feel bad. It's not your fault, I don't want you to be sad. Get out this situation, then call your dad. Girl, you know you're beautiful, you can be mad. One, two, three, four, let 'em know, sis! Hello, my name is Izzy. Izzy with an I. When these old guys talking to me, I gotta say goodbye. I'm very much not into you, so please back off like Boo. And also BTW, don't make me use kung fu. Hello, my name's Amara. Amara with an A. Sometimes I got to shoo these haters away. Don't talk to me, or I'll punch you in the face. Cause I'm beautiful like AK! You gotta let 'em know, sis! I like your flow, sis! You gotta let 'em know, sis! I like your flow, sis! You gotta let 'em know, sis! I like your flow, sis! Thank you!
We had like, on the last week, we literally had the whole song together.
Okay, so this is what they accomplished. They went from zero to getting this song down and then playing for, you played another venue this past Saturday, and then playing for, thank you for playing for us. Amazing, but this is a really great program, and I want to thank, thank you guys so much. And then we got to lower all the mics for some eight-year-olds, so, next band, you guys want to come on up? Now, this band, not only are they from the Bay Area, there are several members of this band, two of them, at least two of them, live in Emeryville, and at least two of them attend Annie Yates.
I got it.
Please welcome the Stargazers.
My name's Lola.
My name's Emory.
And my name is Calliope.
I cannot stand at all, at all, at all. I'm jumping across the moon. I'm happy cause I'm on the moon, the glistening moon. I travel to the moon. I travel to the moon. I see your shining shadow on the moon, the moon, the glistening moon. I travel to the moon. I travel to the moon. I see your shining shadow on the moon, the moon, the glistening moon. That was a "Travel to the Moon" by the Stargazers.
I am super jealous of the star-shaped guitar. I'm wondering if you got that before or after you named your band, but should I take this time to invite my co-council, Ally Medina, up for another portion of the festivities tonight?
That is a very hard act to follow. I did not get the best position in this program. Wow, that's amazing. Thank you so much for bringing that to us. Thank you, our mayor, for putting this together, even though he is not a woman. We do appreciate him. So, I'd like to introduce a resolution of the City Council of the city of Emeryville designating the month of March as Women's History Month in Emeryville. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life in the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home despite being remunerated at a lower rate than their counterparts. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement and the majority of the volunteer labor force of the nation. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a fair and more just society for all. Whereas, as many of the women of color who led these movements are not always properly recognized, we will take a moment to name a few of them. Angela Davis, Audrey Lord, Dolores Huerta, Grace Lee Boggs, and Sylvia Rivera. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued. The literature or teaching and study of American history, now, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of, the city of Emeryville does hereby designate the month of March as Women's History Month.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina. That requires a public comment. Now, here's what I want to make clear. I'm going to have a public comment for all the things we want to say about some of the honorees this evening. Is there anybody who wants to public comment on the resolution? Okay, seeing none. Councilmembers, was there someone who would like to make a motion to approve the resolution? We have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
Councilmember Pats.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, the resolution is approved. And council, if you would join me back up at the dais, we're going to turn this around and take a public comment period.
So, ladies and gentlemen of the public, as is tradition for these special meetings, we afford members of the public one minute to speak for this item. So, if there's any members of the public who wish to come up and make any comments or remarks with respect or an honor to any of our honorees or others who are in attendance tonight, or just general reflections, we'll accept those now. Judy Wetterer.
Good evening. Thank you for doing this, and congratulations to everyone who was honored tonight. On behalf of Wareham Development, I want to thank Gail Donaldson for her long commitment to the city and the Planning Commission. The city's visible improvements are due much to her and her colleagues. Thank you to Courtney and Tiffany of Scientific Adventures for Girls. We have long felt that after-school, weekend, and summer programs in the elementary schools are one of the best ways to invest in the future of the East Bay kids and particularly in challenged communities. Wareham's been impressed with the results of the programs of the Scientific Adventures for Girls, by their willingness to, and their ability to scale up in a short period of time to, you know, bring in more kids, more and more, and by their willingness to find linkages with other programs. We continue to support them because they inspire and help pave the way to jobs with dignity for the kids in these communities where they live. They help fuel the future workforce pipeline in this essential industry that has so well-served Emeryville and the East Bay, and they are teaching science literacy to a new generation of voters who need to be informed when they go to the polls. Lastly, I would like to quote the fifth grader who said to her teacher, I'm sure not you, "We already learned that at Scientific Adventures for Girls." And then finally, to Sharon Wilsher for her remarkable dedication to the city of Emeryville and all who live and work there. We at Wareham quite frankly love Sharon, all of us. Rich and Wareham have been supporting and working with Sharon for over 30 years in various programs in the schools, especially linking math to art, on planning for the Center of Arts, and hosting the celebration of the arts when we could. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Grace Jacobson.
Congratulations to all of the honorees. I loved the biographies of them and hearing about what so many of them had done, and this is a wonderful event. Much as I enjoyed the appreciation for the honorees, I even liked better the information that I learned about our young women, the ones who are in school still. And I'm delighted to hear that such a good program is going with the science and technology and math, and the music was wonderful. And it feels to me that the young ones who are learning the science and experiencing the music are, for me... the music are, for me, the hope for the future.
Thank you, Joyce.[604.04][604.04][applause] Captain West, I see you, see you back there.
Ladies first.[612.82][612.82][laughter] Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and the council, for putting this on today, and recognizing the women on March 20th. And congratulations to all the honorees. I'm up here for Ms. Johnson. She was very inspirational in starting the back-to-school supply drive back in 2013. And when you think of strong women, yeah, I think of Ms. Johnson as a very strong woman. I see how she engages with the students at Annie Yates Elementary. They totally, you know, she has their focus. And you are truly an asset to the Emeryville school system. Oh, I was looking for you. All right, there. So, appreciate everything you did on behalf of Alameda County Fire Department and Local 55. And hopefully, one day, Annie Yates will be your school. And, you know, that, that's, that's a big step, and I think you should think about that. So, uh, thank you for all that you do with the kids at Annie Yates.
Anyone else? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Teresa Munoz, otherwise known as Teacher Tree. I work at Emory High School. I'm an art teacher, and I'm so absolutely grateful to all members of this community, particularly those who, particularly Sharon. Because one of the things that our students are trying to do is to repair the historical record, first to learn about what's out there and what came before them, and to represent themselves and their families in the images that they produce. If you have time, you'll see that Dolores Huerta is out there, along with Malala Yousafzai, Michelle Obama, Shirley Chisholm, some of the notable women that, that our students have learned about and chosen to honor. And these images will be going up on the fencing as temporary, or longer temporary, longer-than-temporary installations at Emory High and Annie Yates. So, thank you to those who help us buy the wood and the paint and keep our spirits going.
Any other members of the public who wish to comment? Board Member Inge, welcome.
Hi, I would like to thank Tiffany Johnson for all that she does for the students at Annie Yates, and her dedication to public service, and serving on the ECL committees, and all of your input. Thank you.
Thank you.[782.41][782.41][applause] Anyone else? Okay, well, I lost my agenda. May I borrow yours for a half second? Okay, we've done almost everything, but we have one thing, because we, you know, tradition is to have something off-agenda. And so, if Councilmembers Donahue and Pats would join me at the podium down there briefly. So, this is Women's History Month, and we recognize some amazing women, but would all the women in the audience today please stand up? Could we please have a round of applause for all the women in our community who are So, we, we have a flower for each of you as well. And so, they're in water, so if you, when you take them out, if you take a napkin and So, once again, I want to thank everybody. Well, hello.[974.00][974.00][laughter] Former councilmember Jennifer West, someone please give her a flower.[978.73][978.73][laughter] Did you wish to public comment on Women's History Month? So, with that, thank you all for coming this evening and joining us again in a great community celebration honoring women in Emeryville. And with that, Madam Clerk, the time is now 7:12. The meeting is adjourned.[1002.44][1002.44][applause]
Oh, and we're going to take a little break.
The time is 7:23. A call to order the City of Emeryville's successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Pats?
Here.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Here.
And Mayor Bowders?
Here. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move. Second.
I have a motion from Member Donahue, and a second from Member Pats to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Ex parte communications. There are no items on the action calendar, so there are none. Public comment for consent items, or items that are not on this agenda? There are none.
No, I'm, I have, um...
Members of the public who wish to speak may speak for three minutes.
So, first off, I'd like to announce to everybody that the, for the third time in a row, open to City Hall, the handicapped access doesn't work down in the lower level. You push the button, it doesn't open the door. So, somebody with a wheelchair would not be able to access City Hall. But that's been that way for the last three meetings. It should be that you push the button, the door opens for handicap access. So, that should be fixed. I guess I would speak to Public Works about that. And then I just wanted to also comment briefly. I was here during the Women's History Celebration just now, sort of informal. So, I was sitting over here in one of these comfortable chairs here. I have a little bit of arthritis in my knee. There was no place to sit. The city, we should know here, the City of Emeryville, through the police chief, told me I had to get up and get out of that chair because of, it's not the proper decorum, I guess. Priorities. City of Emeryville doesn't, and I don't want me to sit in that chair during that, the Women's History Celebration, so I had to get up and leave the chair, under threat of, she was going to force me to leave. So, that's the priorities of the City of Emeryville. Just think it's kind of silly, frankly. I don't think I was hurting anybody by sitting in that during that little celebration before the meeting here tonight, but apparently, the chief of police thinks that that's a bridge too far. Okay, I would like to speak briefly, ask, I guess I want to ask, can I, well, here, I'll just go ahead and say, you're going to be talking about your voting, or just moving forward, an idea tonight to cut down all the street trees on, in front of Sherwin-Williams Street, on Horton, Horton Street. That's got before you here tonight. I don't know if the public can comment during that. But I wanted to talk about the strengthening of the urban forestry ordinance. The idea of the urban forestry ordinance is to save our street trees, and the ordinance has been fallen into sort of disrepair of late. It's, the fee schedule does not keep pay- The fee schedule does not keep pace with Emeryville's assessed valuation, and trees are being cut as a matter of course by developers. The idea of the urban forestry ordinance is that the fee schedule should have a tendency to save our trees, and instead they're just being cut down as a cost of doing business for developers. City Hall likes it because it's seen as a revenue stream, but the UFO was never meant to be a revenue stream. Instead, it was supposed to put a downward pressure, damp down, tamp down the developers' predilections to cutting our street trees. And so, we need to revisit the urban forestry ordinance with an eye towards actually having it save our trees. And so, I think you should pick that item up in a future agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on the consent calendar items not on this agenda for the Redevelopment Agency? Hi, Tim.
Hi. Members of the council, my name is Tim Curran, and I represent a group of residents who live on Horton Street. We're a single-issue group called Friends of Horton Street, and we've come together to oppose that recent planning commission decision to remove 11 trees on Horton Street. You'll be hearing about that briefly, I guess, at the end of the meeting during the department head reports. And we understand that there are concerns about the Lennar Development Community Benefit, which is triggering this resurrection of the interest of removing the trees. That community benefit is the undergrounding of the utilities in our area and, which provides bonus points for the development that they use for their density levels. We're confident that the council, if they reaffirm the previous council's unanimous 2016 vote to retain the trees, and the council gives a clear directive to your staff to find a solution to execute that community benefit without the removal of the trees, that the results will be a community benefit that we can all be really happy with and thankful for. So, you'll be hearing from us. We'll follow up and communicate to you our ideas from a community perspective because we live there among the trees and they're important to us, and we are becoming familiar with the issues surrounding the idea of removing them, and we're motivated to really find a solution that is the best thing for those trees, to enhance and preserve them, or to enhance and preserve the environment for the community that lives there. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone else from the public who wishes to comment? Redevelopment Agency items not on the Redevelopment Agency calendar. Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion on the consent calendar.
So, I moved.
A second.
There's a motion for Member Pats and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Donahue?
Aye.
Well, he's not the mayor.
Oh. That was the last from the...
He's voted twice.
Two votes!
Which is also illegal.
Mayor Bowders?
I will vote aye.
I beg your pardon.
You're okay. There are no action items.
I still got two.
We're all friends. There are no action items. The time is 7:29. The Redevelopment Agency meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:29. Madam Clerk, a call to order the City Council of the City of Emeryville, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, please note that all members of the council are still present. I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
So, moved.
A second.
I have a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Member Donahue to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Okay.
So, Madeline Biskin-Towey and Sherry Ailsworth are joining me here from the American Red Cross, and we have a proclamation proclaiming the month of March is 2018 is American Red Cross Month here in the City of Emeryville. Whereas in 2017, the American Red Cross experienced a record-breaking year of challenging domestic and international response efforts, and whereas through the support of its volunteers, in just 45 days, the Red Cross responded to six of the largest and most complex disasters of 2017, including back-to-back hurricanes, the deadliest week of wildfires in California's history, and the horrific mass shooting in Las Vegas. And whereas, in addition, the Red Cross responded to nearly 50,000 home fires in 2017, providing casework assistance to help 76,000 families recover. And whereas, in the City of Emeryville, the Red Cross has a long history of helping our neighbors in need, and the American Red Cross here in Alameda County assisted with 219 local fire disasters in the past year, assisted 669 families, installed 430 smoke alarms, and reached 1,350 students with their pillowcase project. And whereas, Red Cross's health and safety services have trained 15,903 people in first aid, CPR, AED, and water safety. And whereas, the Red Cross assisted over 1,000 families with their services to armed forces and collected 29,587 blood donations from generous blood donors. And whereas, March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help members of the community, these local heroes upon whom the Red Cross depends to help deliver and hope, to deliver, I'm sorry, help and hope during a disaster. Now, therefore, be it resolved that as Mayor of the City of Emeryville and on behalf of the City Council of the City of Emeryville, I hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Emeryville, and honor those who give themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. Proclaim this 20th day of March 2018 at a regular city council meeting of the City of Emeryville by the Mayor of the City of Emeryville. And I'm going to ask Sherry and Madeline if they would like to make some remarks. I just want to make a brief remark at the outset, if I may. So, my first job, I was a disaster relief director for the American Red Cross through the AmeriCorps program, and through that, I served in 11 disaster operations. I was based in the San Gabriel Valley Chapter in Los Angeles County. I taught basic aid training to students at public schools in Los Angeles when I wasn't on disaster assignment. I came back from being in law to take, at their request, take a 60-day assignment to run disaster relief operations in Plaquemine Parish, Louisiana for Katrina and Rita. And it's incredible, the number of people, especially the number of seniors and women who volunteer their time to go into a disaster zone to provide care, shelter, food, and other services to people who have lost everything. And I was truly, it was one of the first forays I had in my professional space into what really community and public service means, and I have used the lessons from that experience for over 15 years. And so, I'm very pleased to stand here and to welcome you. To say a few remarks and present this proclamation to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, good evening, City Council.
You can use that microphone and talk to everybody.
And Mayor Bowders. Yes, my name is Sherry Ailsworth. I'm a member of the Alameda County Red Cross Leadership Council, and joining me tonight is Madeline Biskin-Towey. She's from Disaster Services. So, it's a great honor to accept this special proclamation from Emeryville declaring March as Red Cross Month. Each year, the President of the United States proclaims March as Red Cross Month. We use this month as a chance to honor and celebrate the everyday heroes who help us fulfill our mission, the Red Cross volunteers and donors who give their time and resources to help members of the community. Our local active volunteers were 13,292, and 1,495 were in Alameda County last year. Our Blood Services Region collected 74,763 blood donations and 29,587 in Alameda County in 2017. We appreciate those who continue to donate blood. There are also some great American Red Cross mobile apps to place on your cellphone. It will inform you about earthquakes happening in your area. It will also show you how to plan ahead for certain disasters or earthquakes, as well as how to recover from them. Go to the App Store and search for the Red Cross. You'll find earthquake, first aid, preparedness, how to donate blood, and they're all free. The Red Cross depends on the local community, our partners, volunteers, and donors to deliver help and hope before, during, and after disasters, big and small. This March, we encourage everyone to become a hero in our local community by joining with the Red Cross to give back to those in need. On behalf of the Alameda County Leadership Council and the California Coastal Region, we want to thank you for this proclamation. But most of all, we would also like to thank you and many of your city staffers, both women and men, who have worked closely with the American Red Cross to make Emeryville a better-prepared city for all types of emergencies or future disasters in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Mayor, thank you so much for the proclamation, and Sherry, thank you for the information as well. My name is Madeline Biskin-Towey. I'm the main contact for the City of Emeryville with the Red Cross, and I work specifically with Lori Elephant. This year has been quite an active year in terms of the partnership and also from a couple of the fire incidents that we have, and the cooperation we had was amazing. I would like to thank, actually, many people here who have been working with us, I would say on a daily basis, to make sure that Emeryville is pretty much prepared for any kind of disaster. The list is long, so I had to put it down, but I would like to mention them. From the Human Resources Department, Lisa Lopez, and of course, Lori Elephant, our main contact, and she has done a phenomenal job coordinating all the different events here in the city with the Red Cross. Community Services Department, Pedro Jimenez. Some job with Brad Helfenberger, I hope I'm saying the right names here. Kim Burowis, Stacy Thomas. Again, thank you so much for the community services. Great partnership with them as well. Carolyn Laird, the city manager, always ready to help us. And I would like to have a special thank you for Chief Jennifer Tejada. Her guidance has been great during the incidents, and as I was mentioning to her, I still remember her words about how to work together for anything that can be needed here in the city. Again, thank you so much for this group. By the way, we ended up the year today with having a signed agreement between the Red Cross and the city for a shelter in case of any emergency, and we have done the survey, we have walked through it, we made sure that it's accessible to anybody, you know, from people with special needs to all of us here, and the shelter is one of the best we have seen in the region. So, again, thanks to Lori and the whole team. We just signed it on both ends, so we have, again, a plan if, we are ready. The city here is one of the best cities, I would say, in terms of preparedness. With that, I would love to, again, I would love to have a picture with the whole team of whoever is available, whoever would like to be on this stage with us to have the picture. This is a picture that we request or ask for.
Come on now, Pedro.
Come on, Pedro. Sure. Chief, please.
Okay. Item five is announcement of commission and committee vacancies. Sherry Hartz?
Okay. Next meeting, April 3, you will interview and appoint one Housing Committee member to finish an unexpired term resulting from a resignation, and that's all for tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Special Announcements, Reports on Meetings Attended. Member Pats?
The Housing Committee met last week. I had to miss it because of the student walkout, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. I had the pleasure of attending the mayor's conference instead of our mayor, and I'm happy to report that our mayor has been elected to a seat on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District.
Thank you.
First time Emeryville's ever had a seat there.
And I want to thank Vice Mayor Medina. I was doing a training teaching some young progressive advocates in Atlanta, and furious text messages coming in from her, and I'm very grateful to you for filling in for me and for the work you did to help give us a seat on the board. Thank you. Member Donahue?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Member Martinez?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, I have a few quick items, and so first, as I do every meeting, AC Alert, acalert.com is a place for you to get updates live on your phone related to emergencies, fires, and other information. It's a program the city is a part of, so you can sign up there. I had the opportunity to go to Kala Art in Berkeley, and I would recommend if any, I know Councilmember Donahue has been many times, but if you haven't had a chance to go, you should go and visit them. And just as an update for the community on that, they have an auction event that fundraises for art and their programs. It's going to be April 26 in the evening, and you can contact Vicki Jo Soul or Chana Horsting for more information, or me if you would really like to know. I had the privilege, since our last meeting, there's a lot of Centarians in our city. I attended two 100-year-old birthdays in the last week. Two African-American women who live in our town who both turned 100 and asked for the mayor to come and proclaim their 100th birthday as celebration. And I will tell you, so I want to congratulate Aravay Sanders and Evelyn Benjamin, both for their 100th birthdays, but I will tell you, Ms. Benjamin, the second I got to sit down next to her and talk to her, she's like, "I have a few things I want to talk to you about." So, heads up Public Works and PD, both of you will be meeting with me to talk, to help make sure that our Centarians are well-cared-for here. We have Day on the Bay is this Saturday, and I'm going to let Pedro say a little bit more about that in a second, but I do want to update my colleagues on the triathlon. So, the triathlon was touch and go because the weather has been really inclement and the bay temperature is much colder, but after a number of phone calls and Pedro and I and Carolyn this morning, we are pleased to announce that despite the frigid water, we are still going to have the triathlon, but we do, we are a few, literally four registrations short of having it all work out, and so I would like to ask all of my colleagues to register because I'm the only one, I found out, because I said, "Can you give me the list of registrants?" And it turns out, I'm the only one who's swimming. So, we can register individually and still participate as relays if we'd like, but we do need to register. And the community can still register too, so if you'd like to see how much longer you can stay above cold water than the mayor, now is your chance. If you can outlast me, I buy you a dinner. And the Community Expo is on the 31st. I'll let Pedro talk about that. And then lastly, just on a very personal level, I have a great cousin who I went to college with. His name's Rob Kelly, and he is the parent of a daughter with Down Syndrome. And so, every year, March 21 is World Down Syndrome Day, and so, if you are like me and you celebrate people who live with disabilities, tomorrow is the day to wear exciting socks. That is how you celebrate Down Syndrome Day. Kids with Down Syndrome, yes, thank you for helping us celebrate. And so, Kealan, my cousin's daughter, loves green and sparkly things, I think, so I'm going to be wearing green sparkly socks tomorrow, and I hope you will find some exciting socks to wear of your own. So, with that, I want to ask Pedro, do you want to add on anything there to the events that the community should know?
Yes, so for this weekend, Saturday, the Day on the Bay is from 10 to 2. The triathlon starts at 9 o'clock, and then check-in will be at 7:30. You can hopefully register in advance, but you can also register the day of if you don't get a chance to. And there'll be a lot of activities, free activities for everyone to enjoy, families and children. The Community Expo is scheduled for March 31 from 10 to 1. The egg hunt will start at 10:30 a.m., and we'll have a lot of activities. There'll also be summer program registration that will be offer a 10% early bird discount, and there'll be other departments there to share information regarding what's going on in the city, especially Police Department, Fire Department, and other city services and vendors to provide information. Also wanted to say that we have a community workshop tomorrow night for inviting the community to give input on Davenport Park, a playground. It'll be starting at 5:30, held at Watergate Clipper Club, and that's on Captain Drive. So, hope to see the community come out and give us information of what they'd like to see out there, so.
Thank you. And for the Community Expo, raise money for... So you're reporting on item 13.1, the Department Head Reports?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
No? Okay. Member Martinez?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Nothing to report.
Member Pats?
Nothing to report.
I had a conversation with Trish. Is Trish here? Hi, Trish. Trish and a couple others regarding item 12.2, which relates to the enactment of a revenue-neutral carbon tax, which is on the agenda. Public comment for consent items or not, items that are not on this agenda. I have one speaker card from Ken Bukowski.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to let people know I'm gathering signatures for the statewide ballot measure to reform Prop 13, so if anybody wants to sign that, please see me. Then I eventually want to ask you not to support regional measure three. But before that, I want to just briefly explain how I look at transportation, okay? Transportation is the second most important thing in our lives. The first is health and safety. Your mobility determines the speed of your world, determines the places you can go and the things you can do. There are people that are able-bodied that have restricted mobility. Those are people who are in jail. So we penalize people by taking away their mobility. Now, when you think about transportation and you think about low-income people, how do you think they feel when they can't afford to get where they need to go? I mean, everybody has to live, needs to be able to go where they need to go. Well, you could become disenchanted, your quality of life is diminished. So I really think that we should strive to make public transit free for everybody. And how could that be accomplished? Well, transportation does one other thing. It determines the value and use of land. So as we decide we're putting a bar extension down to San Jose, every property owner who owns property adjacent to that improvement is gonna have increased value. They're gonna charge higher rents. You can't use land without a transportation connection, because vacant land with no connection has no value. But once you put that transportation connection there, now it can be used and money can be earned. So a portion of the money earned should be used to pay for the transportation connection. We should be out there with our public money, going to property owners, and leveraging the public money to get private money. There's no reason why we should continue to just have the public pay for the transportation connections while the property owners make the money. We gotta pay the maintenance, we gotta pay for the increases, and they collect more rent. So there's a direct correlation between land use, transportation, and financial responsibility for the use of land. So I'm merely trying to advocate not approving RN3 for even other regions. They have this project in there for hot lanes. Hot lanes converts HOV lanes into a situation where a single occupant driver can pay a fee and have the advantage of bypassing all of the other traffic. Well, that's discrimination against the low-income person, and then for all we've done for climate change to even encourage single-occupant vehicles, it's totally contrary to what we're doing. There's no specificity of how that money's gonna be spent. Now, maybe if they spent that money to reduce the cost of public transit, it might be worthwhile. If we took some rich toll money and we reduced the cost of transit, you're gonna reduce congestion, gonna relieve bar overcrowding, and it'd be great for everybody. So anyway, that's my pitch, and I have an article for you.
Thank you, Ken. Other members of the public who wish to speak on the consent calendar, items not on this agenda, have three minutes to speak.
Okay, so I wanted to... Last time I thought I was speaking at the city council meeting, I didn't know it was the redevelopment. So I'll just expand on the two topics I talked about before. So in the future, from now on, whenever we have a duly noticed meeting in this room, there is to be no members of the public sitting in any of the black chairs, according to the chief of police. So, you know, I'm gonna see to it that that's adhered to, because you have to have fair and equal treatment under the law. So since I was just chased out of there, you know, everybody's gonna be chased out of there from now, because I've noticed members of the public commonly sit in those seats when there's like an informal but official meeting happening. It's very common, but from now on, no more, according to the chief of police, and I'll help enforce that. It's gonna be really stupid, but that's our city. Anyway, so I wanted to talk a little bit more about the UFO and with specificity to these trees on Horton Street that the Sherman Williams developer wants to kill, to cut down. As we go about, you know, discussing this subject, I think we need, behooves us to ask why. What's the real reason why the trees, the developer's requesting that the PUD be changed to allow him to cut the trees down? And I think if you have any sort of like intellectual curiosity, like or natural curiosity about this, and you do any questioning of the developer or the staff representative pushing this, you're gonna come to find out that the reason why the developer wants to cut the trees down is monetary. It'd be cheaper for them, maybe even considerably cheaper. You know, but you have to realize the developer has a fiduciary interest toward his shareholders, it's a publicly traded corporation, to get the best deal possible. So they want to cut the trees down. And I don't think I need to remind the five of you that sometimes developers lie. I mean, we found that out with the marketplace development, when that guy said that the 11% of affordability won't pencil out, and then his bluff was called by the council. But developers lie, and it's not illegal to lie. We expect them to lie. I mean, it's in, if they're lying to increase the bottom line, they're doing their due diligence by their shareholders. So they lie to us. We shouldn't be shocked by it, it's just normal, a normal way of doing business. But we expect our interests to hold sway over the developer. So if it's just a matter of money, and if you question, you'll find that's in fact what the real story is, you should say no to this developer. This developer took a risk when he decided to do this development in Emeryville, that there's a chance that maybe the urban forestry ordinance might actually be applied, in which case he'd have to spend a lot of money to save the trees. But he took that risk, so he willingly went into this project, taking that risk, so I think you should look out after our interests and not the developer's interests.
Thank you for your comment. Other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. I'll take a motion.
So moved?
I would like to discuss 10.5.
Okay, we'll pull 10.5. Vice Mayor Medina, will you amend your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move the consent except for 10.5.
I'll take a second for that motion.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Martinez to approve items 10.1 through 10.4. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, those items are approved. Item 10.5 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the 2017 General Plan Annual Progress Report and authorizing submittal to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research at HCD in California. Member Donahue?
Well, this is a question pretty much for Charlie, and maybe you, John, would know. One of the major incomes for us as a city to be able to build affordable housing has been a kind of tax break for wealthy people to contribute money to this cause if they get a break on the tax that they would normally pay and then they fund our affordable housing. Well, this is changed with the change in tax laws. So while this report is showing our progress for 2017, it's not looking good relative to that fund for 2018. What is the percentage loss, probable loss, for affordable housing going forward? Ballpark, I don't expect a, you know, just like, in other words, maybe we should start to discuss how we're gonna operate in relation to affordable housing as a future agenda item, you know, if this is a significant percentage of funding.
You're referring to the low-income tax credits, I believe.
That's right.
Yes, I know, that could potentially have an effect on the funding for future affordable housing projects. I would note, though, that those projects are typically the standalone affordable projects like 3706 San Pablo Avenue. I'm not sure if the ambassador projects use tax credits, it probably did. I'm not sure if it would affect our regular market rate housing projects that are required to have a certain percent of affordable project units within them. They are gonna need to fund that however they can, so I don't, it's not gonna affect that requirement. But I can refer this to our housing coordinator and see if we can get you an answer for a future meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Many, even if it's not city-sponsored 100% affordable housing, most of them rely on some form of tax credit to be financed. In fact, it's a pretty diverse group of financing components that make it happen. Not all of them do. There are some tax credits and some tax financing that are restricted to deeded land parcels, and so there are some places where you can't do mixed income with tax credits, but that's not generally the history in Emeryville, and so you're right to note the fact that the federal tax code has changed and it has had some impact on elements of affordable housing law. The most dangerous component of that tax bill that would have really undercut the value of tax credits was amended out right before it was passed, and so although there are some changes that are coming, it will make it a little harder to do, to finance certain types of projects. We avoided most of the pitfalls that the tax bill posed, and I see Chad nodding in agreement, I believe, and Charlie, would that be your understanding as well?
Yeah.
Okay, so the proposal from Charlie is to have Catherine perhaps get you and us some more information. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, that's the amendment to the Member Donahue's motion. Is there a second?
A second.
So there's a motion by Member Donahue with a friendly amendment from Mayor Bowders, seconded by Councilmember Martinez. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, item is approved. Item 11.1 is a public hearing, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville confirming the Public Works Director's report and authorizing costs incurred by the City of Emeryville in the matter of appeal from notice and order of intention to demolish property owned by Andre Carpio located at 1264 Ocean Avenue, Emeryville, California, case ADBC 15-001, and to be charged a special assessment in the amount of $50,145.75 against property. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Before you tonight is the continued public hearing from your February 20th meeting regarding the consideration of the Public Works Director's report regarding the costs incurred by the city in accomplishing the demolition of the property at 1264 Ocean Avenue owned by Mr. Carpio. Before I continue any further, the city had received an email request from Mr. Carpio to continue the hearing tonight on the basis that he was not going to be able to attend tonight's hearing. That being said, I also note that there are representatives of Mr. Carpio's here in the audience as well. So perhaps before I go any further, is it the will of the council that you actually hear the meeting or the hearing tonight, or would you like to consider...
Let me ask that question, Mr. City Attorney. So members, would you like to waive the presentation? How do folks feel?
It seemed pretty explanatory with the document.
There's a full staff report on a document. This is about placing essentially a lien on a piece of property related to a Public Works Act.
That's Public Works and building, that's correct.
Building, correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that a majority who wished to waive? Is there any member who wishes the full presentation?
No.
No? Okay, we will waive it, and I will call for public comment, and if there's a need to take information, I will reopen public comment at that time, City Attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:01. The public hearing is open. Members of the public who wish to speak on this item may speak for three minutes. I have no speaker cards on this item, so if any members wish to speak, please approach the podium.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Patrick Carpio.
Hold the microphone so everyone can hear.
I'm Patrick Carpio, I'm his youngest son. I came, whatever, a couple weeks ago, three weeks ago. As for continuance, my father had to go out of the country for, essentially, his sister died, so, you know, again, another tragedy. So anyway, I'm here to represent him, and I bought his attorney and a friend of mine also. So I just ask, my dad's been through enough in his life, not to give him another problem, which would be essentially a lien that he would never be able to repay. You know, I'm willing to take on his property now and rebuild, put a new house on the property. I would like to do that. A lien, I don't think at this point's gonna help me accomplish that. Anyway, now that the house is gone, the property is undergoing tremendous amounts of flooding that he's been complaining about. That's been hidden now, but not anymore, because there's nothing there to hide it anymore, so now it's basically a swamp. So anyway, something else that will have to be dealt with. Anyway, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time? Evening, Michael.
Good afternoon, Mayor. You know, I heard you refer to yourself as a progressive advocate, and I like that, and so I'm gonna speak to what I think would be the progressive solution. If the lien is placed for all intents and purposes, Andre can't rebuild, and you have an eyesore. So if you want to do something that's sort of a mindless rote autopilot act and put a piece of paper on a property that I guess on a balance sheet shows that you're entitled to $51,000 that you'll never collect, you can do that. But that prevents Andre's son from rebuilding the property, you'll never collect the money, Mr. Schwartz is immediately gonna file an administrative writ of mandamus because of some mistakes that your lawyer, Mr. Baer, did, and it's an eyesore for five years. How does that accomplish anything? If you're, this is a discretionary act. The City Council has discretion to place this lien and try to enforce it. I think after five years, then you can theoretically foreclose on the lien if it's not discharged in bankruptcy. The smart thing that I would say to be good fiduciaries of the taxpayer's money would be to simply instruct the city attorney to work with Mr. Carpio and perhaps issue but stay the order so he can then get his construction loan and rebuild it. It doesn't make any sense at all to, in essence, place a lien that prevents financing and keeps an ugly trash-strewn lot there. That's not what the neighbors want. How does that actually benefit the city or the neighbors? I thought this was a nuisance property, so now it's a nuisance lot. I would just point out that, you know, you guys are smart people, and I'm not saying that to, you know, facetiously, but if the goal is to get the property habitable and rebuilt, you don't accomplish that by clouding its title with a lien that nobody will offer a loan through. The last thing I would say, just on the other topic of issuing but staying the order, is that, you know, if you do that and you instruct the city attorney to work with Mr. Carpio, the whole reason this problem came up was that the attorney that the council or that the city attorneys offered to hire was a gentleman named Lance Baer, who was fired from the city of San Francisco, as we talked about last time, for letting racist, anti-Semitic, and homophobic police officers get their jobs back and not fight in it. So obviously, it wasn't too surprising when an 83-year-old Holocaust survivor came along and his son showed up and said, "Let me rehab this," that he wasn't very sympathetic. So I think the city partly is responsible for hiring somebody that nobody else seems to want to hire, once they find out his background, and could at least show some degree of progressive advocacy in not clouding... That's not what the neighbors want. How does that actually benefit the city or the neighbors? I thought this was a nuisance property, so now it's a nuisance lot. I would just point out that—you know, you guys are smart people, and I'm not saying that to—you know, to facetiously. But if the goal is to get the property habitable and rebuilt, you don't accomplish that by clouding its title with a lien that nobody will offer a loan through. The last thing I would say, just on the other topic of—of issuing but staying the order, is that—you know, if—if you do that and you instruct the city attorney to work with Mr. Carpio, the whole reason this—this problem came up was that the attorney that the council or that the city attorneys offered to hire was a gentleman named Lance Bear, who was fired from the City of San Francisco, as we talked about last time, for letting racist, anti-Semitic, and homophobic police officers get their jobs back and not fight in it. So obviously, it wasn't too surprising when an 83-year-old Holocaust survivor came along and his son showed up and said, "Let me rehab this," that he wasn't very sympathetic. So I think the city partly is responsible for hiring somebody that nobody else seems to want to hire, once they find out his background, and could at least show some degree of progressive advocacy in not clouding title and letting this to be worked—worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else from the public who wish to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Donald Schwartz, and I am Andre Carpio's attorney. While listening to the public comments, I was reminded of when I was a 23-year-old staff member of the Assistant Attorney General in Washington, DC, and a memo crossed my desk, and it said, "There are three issues facing our civilization." This is—a—this memo was written in 19—1976. It said, "There are three issues facing our civilization. Are we going to blow ourselves up? Can we live harmoniously with this environment? And can we control corporate power?" And now, after hearing the comments tonight, we have to add whether or not public transportation fits into that as a fourth matter. But Andre Carpio, and I say somewhat with tongue-in-cheek, has another issue in his life. After surviving the Holocaust, he comes here, owns a home that is over 100 years old, as old as this building, and certainly older than the planning department, that gets torn down because of flooding caused by the City of Oakland, which, after he complains to the City of Oakland, he is told that, "We're going to get you." And all of a sudden, this action springs up in Emeryville. It seems like if there is any compassion left in you people that you—if you do approve the lien, that you hold off for 60 days or so to record it so that we can try to negotiate something, which would include a package to rehab the project with appropriate financing. And I would also like to say for the administrative record that this lien was a requirement to be included in your cross complaint, which you filed in the Superior Court but did not, and that case was dismissed, and therefore you are precluded from pursuing this lien as a matter of law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, everything about this subject here, this issue, is just odious. I've lived in Emeryville for about 35 years. I've known Mr. Carpio for much of—the—for many of those years. I've said, "Majority of those years." And to see what happened to him, what the City of Emeryville did to him, is really disturbing, really distressing to me. You know, who—who is Andre Carpio, or who was he, we should say, since he's been drummed out of our town? He was an eccentric man, sort of the town character. He built a submarine on his front lawn, and that's what started this whole problem. His problem with the City of Emeryville started when he began building a submarine on his front lawn. The neighbors didn't like it. They complained. Councilmember Nora Davis was aghast that a person—a citizen was building a submarine. "It's an eyesore," Councilwoman Nora Davis said. And that began Mr. Carpio's troubles. Started out as an eyesore, and then it kind of, you know, morphed and changed and got uglier as it went along, the—the problem. And then the city was determined to have his house—to kick him out, have his house removed. So Andre Carpio and his submarine, the City of Emeryville says, "No to. We don't like submarines in Emeryville, homemade submarines on—on our front lawns." But what do we like? We like Burger King. We love Burger King. Burger King gets to stay here in Emeryville. Andre and his submarine have to go. I'm sorry, Andre. We like sub—low-slung suburban shopping malls, you know, auto-centric shopping malls like the East Bay Bridge Mall. We love that. We love us some low-slung shopping malls with some, like Home Depot and that sort of thing in it. We love that in Emeryville. So they get to stay, you know, all kinds of malls. We love us fast—some fast-food restaurants. We love us some shopping malls. But what we don't like are eccentric old men building submarines in their front yards in our town. It's an eyesore. Got to get rid of it. And then I'll say, lastly, that the city should never have torn down Mr. Carpio's home. Mr. Carpio's home is in his area of stability in our general plan. Our general plan has earmarked certain areas in our town, so the houses should not be torn down. And so this is your own law, and you tore down a house that was in the zone of stability. So I—you know, I don't—you just don't have very—very much credibility on this subject anymore. The area of stability should have—the house should have been saved. I'm a contractor. I—this is what I do for a living. That house is in fine shape. It could have been rehabilitated. And then the last thing, the $50,000 charge. You know, I have a demolition contractor friends—
Your time is up. Thank you for your comment.
Paid too much. Thank you.
Other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, the time is 8:12. The public hearing is closed. Members, if you'll indulge me, before we discuss if it's okay, I'd like to ask the city attorney if he would like to respond to any of the legal questions or issues that were raised. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes, please.
Mr. City Attorney.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. What I'll focus in on is Mr. Schwartz's comment that the lien proceeding should have been included in the city's cross complaint. My response to that is that this hearing before you tonight is an administrative hearing, and it is essentially the extension of the administrative hearing—the administrative process that the city undertook when it issued the first notice and order to abate and which resulted in the administrative hearing that confirmed the building officials' order. And—and that administrative process is what this is today, which is independent of the judicial process that was initiated by Mr. Carpio to challenge the validity of the city's actions. So we are—what we are not considering tonight is whether the order to abate was valid, whether that should or should not have happened. All you are considering tonight is whether the costs that the city had incurred were properly attributed to the actions that the city took pursuant to that notice and order to abate. The merits of the underlying abatement action are not on the table tonight.
I have a couple of questions, but before I ask—do members have questions for the city attorney? Mr. Donahue?
The request to delay for 60 days, does that endanger the entire lien, or is that not an issue from your point of view legally?
No, that's—it's—if the City Council wishes to issue the lien or have the lien happen, it can—the council can direct that it not be recorded for a period of time, if that is the council's wish.
If the property changes ownership in those 60 days, does that impair the lien?
Well, if the—well, we would—we would be filing it against the property, so—
Right. So it doesn't matter who owns it?
Right. No. I mean, I think that we can—I think that we—because we're—we're—no, because the—the property is—the—the lien process is—is going against the property.
Does it not give notice to a new landowner?
We would have to—it would absolutely give notice as well, but—
Well, but I'm saying, if—if—I purchased the property as a buyer in good faith tomorrow, and then you put a lien on the property that I've purchased in good faith, what is my recourse?
If you had purchased the property, and we would have to put—we would have to put some sort of notice on—on the property immediately.
Isn't California a race-to-notice jurisdiction?
It is a race-to-notice jurisdiction.
So how—how would my rights not be impaired if you delayed filing a lien?
We would probably need to file some sort of notice that there is a pending lien that would be happening.
With pendance.
Essentially, yes. But we would—what we would need to do is—what I'm hearing the request is that the effectiveness of the lien be delayed for a period of time. What would—we—what we would need to do is—if the council wishes to apply—you know, apply the—the remedy tonight, is that if you wanted to delay it, we would have to file something on the record to notify the world that there will be a pending assessment.
That—I think is the essence of Councilmember Donahue's question, and I'm going to save my comments for comments. Are there other questions? No, thank you, Michael. I'm going to begin with Councilmember Pats.
So I—I want to thank Mr. Geena for clarifying the issue this evening, because I—I don't want to debate how we ended up where we are. This has been a long, long time in coming, and the options to resolve that issue have passed. We've incurred this cost. This is not my money. This is not your money. This is ours. The City of Emeryville spent this money, and we have a fiduciary duty to recoup that money in a timely fashion for our citizens. And we should not have had to be in this position, and we're not here to assign blame, but it is our job to manage the city's money. And we talk a lot about budgets, and it's irresponsible of us not to act in a timely fashion to recoup costs that we should not have had to incur.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Medina.
I concur with Councilmember Pats.
Councilmember Martinez?
I'm sorry, our job tonight is to confirm the report set forth to us by staff, which enumerates incurred costs, and I'm prepared to do that.
Councilmember Donahue?
If we could give them 60 days, and that would help them, I don't see that there would be any loss to the taxpayers of our city.
Does anyone have a comment on that before I comment? Do you want me to comment first?
Comment first.
So I—I concur with my colleagues, and I don't support the 60 days. I don't support the 60 days because this began in 1976. And I have given close to 100 hours of my time to assist Andre in this matter as it went through the administrative process, including—in helping include in the administrative decision, when I was a planning commissioner, that he—that no action be taken against the property until the city staff had offered him services. And they—they told that time period. He never took advantage of that, which was his choice. He had almost two years during the demolition, noticing, and rehabilitation period to come with a plan. He did not come with a plan. I love Andre. I—I really do. And I know that might seem inconsistent to those who came and spoke on his behalf this evening, but I agree with Councilmember Pats that we have a fiduciary duty to the community. It's not a personal thing for me at all. And at the last meeting, you know, Councilmember Pats's position hasn't wavered, and I heard your pleas, Patrick and Michael, and I asked my colleagues to all join me in giving him more time. And when we had the administrative hearing, I pushed to get him reasonable accommodations for additional hearing time. I pushed to get him transcripts typed. So Lance Bear hated me, let me tell you. Lance Bear did not like me during that process.
Maybe for other reasons.
Well, it could be for a lot of reasons, but the reason I know is that because we were really keen on protecting the rights to the process, and those rights have reached a point where—I'm concerned, Member Donahue, that all this time that staff has put into this, at this point, giving additional time, I'm concerned about the potential legal situation that would arise from a transfer of property and then a new bona—bona fide landowner not having actual or constructive notice of our action. And so I don't support 60 days, and I'm—I'm—that's where I'm at. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Member Pats and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the resolution.
Councilmember Donahue?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowder?
Aye. Okay. Item 11.2 is the sport fishing agreement. And Andrew, are there any members of the public here to speak on the sport fishing agreement? Are there any members of the public here to hear the sports fishing agreement presentation? Andrew, unless you are dying to present this, I'm going to ask colleagues, do you agree, council, that we can waive presentation?
We can waive the presentation.
Yes. Did it come with a fishing demonstration? If not, then I'm going to waive it.
Okay, Andrew, we're going to waive presentation. Item 11.2.1 is a resolution of the City Council approving and amending the related sports—sport fishing concessions agreement between the City Council and Andrew Giuliano in authorizing the city manager to execute that agreement. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none. Members, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'm going to get—
Oh, Michael, sorry.
Excuse me, Mayor. This is noticed as a public—
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. This is a public hearing. The time is 8:21. The public hearing is open. All members of the public who wish to speak at the public hearing are afforded three minutes to speak. Any members of the public, please approach the podium. Seeing none. Time is 8:21. The public hearing is closed. Thank you, Michael. Any discussion, or I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Councilmember Donahue to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. 11.2.1 is approved. 11.2.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville approving the Second Amendment to the second amended and restated agreement of ground lease by and between the City of Emeryville and Safe Harbor Marina's Emeryville LLC and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement. The time is 8:22. Public hearing is open. All members of the public who wish to speak have three minutes. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none. Time is 8:22. The public hearing is closed. Is there any discussion? I'll take a motion.
Move the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Martinez and a second from Councilmember Pats to approve. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye. Both resolutions are approved. On to action items. 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city manager to execute conceptual design proposal contracts for the Marina Public Art Project, with a handful of very talented artists, and each artist to be paid $3,000 stipend and up to $4,000 for travel costs for those based out of the area. Amber, hi.
Hi. Amber Evans, Community Development Coordinator, bringing you four finalists tonight in response to a public process of selection that had the following goals, and I won't read them all, and—but I want to stress that the RFP said, "Please meet one of these and possibly more." And there isn't an expectation that the artists meet all of these, because we're looking for something that could be iconic. It's raising awareness of the uses of the shoreline, be a landmark for visitors by boat and walking in the area, the possibility of kinetic or engageable or climbable—I think we're inventing that word—and then utilizing maybe some visionary or innovative ways to hearken back to the mudflat art that had been in the Emeryville Crescent to the south, and think about something that's durable but pays homage. In the RFP, we highlighted three possible sites. They're maybe hard to read, but they're numbered 1, 2, and 3, and they're trying to be adjacent to the trail, visible to a high proportion of users, but not interfere with public use of the park space. These images hearken back to that map, so the one at the bottom is that corner, right at the edge in the corner of the L, and then you have the points along the trail and the berm. And so there are four artists that were selected for you tonight through the selection panel and recommended unanimously by both the selection panel and the Public Art Committee for their prior work. They have, at this point, just provided qualifications. These are examples of prior works, not proposals, for the site. Each of these artists would be asked to—and provided a stipend to provide a specific proposal for the site within the budget and the site constraints. Understanding, some of these examples by these artists include potentially electricity or other elements that are not available at the sites, or more ephemeral and wouldn't stand up to the conditions we have on the site. But this first artist is Pete Beeman. He was a finalist for artist selection at ECCL, so we have seen some of his work before. He is noted primarily for his engineering capacity and the durability of his materials, and then the kinetic aspects to that. He has a lot of moving parts, but he's known for making them to last. Sometimes that's bicycles, sometimes that's hand crank. He has just completed an installation in Palo Alto that's similar in scale to this one elsewhere, and has a variety of materials that are considered suitable for the Marina site. Matt Geller is the second artist, and I should say that both Pete, Matt, and one of the other artists are all out of New York, and only one of the artists, Ned Khan, is here locally. and only one of the artists, Ned Khan, is here locally, so we will be using those travel stipends. Matt Geller is noted for, at times, using reclaimed materials. You'll see in his samples, there's a lot of seating and functionality, but then there's also site context-integrated activities. This at the Blind School had a lot of texture for those specific users. This has a seesaw that directs water to the rain lamp. Ned Khan is the only local artist, is out of Sebastopol. I just wanted to note that he is exhibiting his work through March 25th in Walnut Creek at the Bedford Gallery, particularly because many of the samples here are larger-scale works. Our consultants did confirm that he is happy to work in our budget and do a smaller-scale work, but he's known for, as in this case, some very large-scale work. But at Walnut Creek, you would see some of those smaller examples appropriate to the site. He's also known for bringing in elements of natural aspects into his work. Alan Averbach, the fourth artist, was really noted, the materials choices he used, appropriate for the site at the Marina, the durability of those materials, and as I said, all four artists were unanimously proposed for, to be asked to do conceptual designs, and that's the action before you tonight.
Thank you, Amber. Are there any questions from councilmembers before we take public comment? Seeing none, members of the public who wish to comment on this item have three minutes. Are there any members from the public who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, discussion, or I'll entertain a motion. Member Pats?
You know, just this evening, it stands out to me in particular. There are four, have to be four men. Also, didn't quite see all of their headshots, but I want to say four white guys even. So I'm not super overwhelmed, excited by that. I'll leave it at that.
Other members?
Well, I'd like to say the Public Art Selection Committee worked hard on this, and of the people that applied, they really thought these were the best applicants, and I support them on their recommendations.
Councilmember Martinez?
I support these recommendations as well, although I did notice the propensity to select men. I think it's just men happen to go into making giant public art. I don't like.
I will say, if this is a question before me, there were finalists that were women, and the particular nature of materials, and a number of artists that were considered used electricity primarily in their work, and this site does not have any of those access components, so that did narrow. There was the possibility of having five finalists, and it was narrowed to four.
Did there, when they applied, were they told that there would be no connectivity to those?
Yes, absolutely. It's just their body of work had that evidence.
I would also like to see more women and people of color, and more diversity in the folks we're selecting from in the future, but I think that, given the constraints that we were dealing with, I think these are some really exciting artists that we could be working with.
Vice Mayor Medina hasn't spoke. Do you want to speak?
You know, I have heard the comments of my fellow members. I agree. I think the Arts Committee does a great job of vetting, and I'm prepared to support these recommendations.
Did you have an add-on?
Just briefly, yeah. You know, there are, because we were lucky enough to have that happen at the ECCL, where there were a couple of women finalists, if I remember correctly. What?
Two out of three of the artists selected at ECCL were women.
I got the number right at two, I'm happy. I do support this, and I want to echo what Member Donahue said. I think the committee does an amazing job. I think my wife participated on the ECCL projects, and I was just throwing it out there. So, and with that, I'll move the item.
Okay, before we do that, I'd like to make a brief comment, which is, I want to fully endorse what Councilmember Pats has said, and I would actually like, if it's, I'm sure people don't view it as a necessary thing, but in this case, we had no female finalists, which also caught my attention, especially on the night we had tonight, putting this agenda together. But for me, an ongoing issue is, I would like to see people of color have art in the community. The artist community is diverse, but not as diverse as I think some of us would like it to be. I have been speaking with artists in the community about the need to find ways to do that, and our affordable housing bond that we're putting forward is one way to do that. And I'm always looking for other ways, and so I want to just echo all of the other councilmembers, but especially Councilmember Pats' suggestion that if that requires us in the future to do special grants that target minority artists, I would like the staff to report back on how that could be done, because I think that should be a priority for our community, too. So we have a motion from Member Pats. Do you have anything you wanted to say?
I did want to highlight one of the elements unique to this caller, since the Public Art Master Plan was adopted, to include the offer to all artists responding for an optional stipend, where they would write a proposal, say a paragraph, that says how they would work with local members of the community, and the diversity we have in the community, to build up capacity, or teach a skill, or have that integrated within the art. So this came out of a heartfelt discussion, I think, that mirrors your own among the Public Art Committee about how do we take the investments we put into art and use that to build skill and capacity within the community. So we'll see what these artists have to offer in that, and the transferability of their skills, and if they're willing to work with that stipend.
Thank you, Amber. There's a motion from Member Pats.
I'll second.
There's a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve the resolution. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, that's approved. Item 12.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville urging the United States Congress to enact a revenue-neutral carbon tax. Andrew, for this item, I have three speaker cards, and I will call those speakers when we have concluded the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Andrew Clowyer, acting Public Works Director. Before you, this evening is a resolution for your consideration urging the United States Congress enact a revenue-neutral carbon tax. Staff has been in communication with the Alameda County Citizens Climate Lobby, and the attached resolution is based upon their template. I can review the highlights of the resolution for you now, or I can refer to you, Mr. Mayor, for further discussion, as I think you're probably more conversant on it than I am.
Members, are there any questions about the staff report?
No.
No, thank you, Andrew. What we'll do is, I will call the speakers, I know we have several speakers for this item, and let them speak, and maybe there's a need to discuss further, maybe not. How about that? So the first speaker is Rebecca Naco.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Naco. I've been an Emeryville resident for about a year and a half in the Watergate complex, and as a citizen, I'm very concerned with climate change, not just as a global issue, but about how it's going to affect us right here in Emeryville. I've joined a volunteer group called Citizens Climate Lobby, volunteer nonprofit, nonpartisan, nationwide organization with nearly 100,000 members. CCL, otherwise known as CCL, seeks to have the United States Congress pass a carbon fee and dividend law to sharply reduce carbon fuel use. This proposal has already received official endorsements from the city councils of Berkeley, Oakland, Alameda, Albany, El Cerrito, San Francisco, and Richmond. The state of California Senate and Assembly have also endorsed a very similar proposal. I know that Emeryville has a very strong sustainability ethic, and was among the first wave of U.S. cities to adopt a climate action plan, 2008, to reduce its greenhouse gas emissions 25% for 2020. I'm very happy about that, and about your continuing efforts to create a vision for a carbon-neutral city, and to prepare Emeryville for the impacts of climate change. This national carbon fee and dividend resolution before you tonight will help Emeryville to reach its critical emissions target by quickly and fairly reducing the use of carbon-based fuels, as well as encouraging renewables. I urge you to approve this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next, I have Al Kufner?
Albert Kufner?
Kufner, thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm an eight-year Emeryville resident, and I'm also a member of Citizens Climate Lobby, and very concerned about climate change. Cities and counties have many reasons to be concerned about climate change, especially since impacts are felt locally. As weather worsens throughout the United States, water shortages, sea level rise, air pollution, increasingly intense storms, agricultural impacts, infectious diseases, and increased wildfires impact and strain local budgets. While national action to lower CO2 emissions is waiting to be passed, cities and counties bear the financial brunt of climate change's local impacts. Climate change is a national issue. Enacting a fee on fossil fuels would act to lower greenhouse gas emissions and begin the transition to clean energy sources. Therefore, federal action on climate change is highly relevant to cities and counties from a financial perspective, as well as in addressing quality of life and health issues. While action on a national level may seem hopeless, progress is being made in Congress. Citizens Climate Lobby has been working for several years to form a bipartisan climate solutions caucus in the House of Representatives. This caucus currently has 72 members, 36 Republicans and 36 Democrats. We're getting close to legislation which can be advanced even during this challenging political time in Washington. Therefore, I urge you to pass this resolution before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Larry Sullivan?
I'm Larry Sullivan, and I have been an Emeryville resident for 15 years, and a resident of Alameda County a lot longer, and I also am a member of Citizens Climate Lobby, and concerned about climate change. To quote from Emeryville's excellent climate action plan, "Climate change is the greatest environmental challenge of the 21st century. It poses a serious threat not just to California's natural resources, but also to our jobs and our health. I couldn't agree more, and I'm happy that we, as a city, recognize the threats posed by climate change. For many decades, people did not realize the consequences of burning fossil fuels and the rising CO2 in our atmosphere. The U.S. was the world's largest polluter, only recently surpassed by China, although on a per capita basis, we're still way ahead. Today, we understand the risks and costs, but in most places, there is no financial penalty for adding to the carbon pollution that drives climate change. As long as carbon pollution remains free, the true costs of fossil fuels will be hidden and may appear cheaper than low-carbon alternatives." This carbon fee and dividend proposal, resolution, rather, addresses the difficult transition to clean energy in a way that protects lower-income people from the effects of rising prices on carbon-based fuels. The fee corrects a market imbalance of letting fossil fuel companies use the earth and our atmosphere as a dumping ground for the pollution caused by burning carbon. When some of the fees collected are returned to lower-income households, these people can cover the costs of steadily rising fossil fuels and products based on them. I know Emeryville cares about a just transition from a carbon-based economy, and that also from our climate action plan. Quote, "Climate change also presents huge opportunities for creating a healthier, safer, and more equitable zero-carbon world. Emeryville has an unparalleled opportunity to make changes in ways that create jobs and benefits all residents," unquote. Having a national carbon fee and dividend law would level the playing field and hasten our transition to a cleaner, safer world. I urge you to approve this resolution and put pressure on our national Congress to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, public comment is closed, and for discussion, I'd like to begin with our Sustainability Committee Chair, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, I'll be supporting this, and I got to say, I really appreciate you all coming out. Looking at national politics can be daunting, exhausting, and defeating, and to fight the fight and put forward a resolution demanding Congress take action on something that is an ever-present, obvious problem for our community, I just really appreciate your tenacity in fighting in the face of the overwhelming odds of our U.S. Congress. Thank you so much for bringing this to us tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I'm going to move these flowers so I can see members of the public. I just want to thank you all for coming to speak tonight. I don't think I've ever met any of you before, but I'm so impressed by your grassroots lobbying, the Citizens Climate Lobby, and I hope to hear more from you in the future. And, Mr. Sullivan, congratulations on reading our climate action plan, and thank you for doing that. I think when it comes to a federal impact, we need to have lofty goals, and the goal of curtailing U.S. emissions to 10% of 1990 levels by 2050 is going to take a lot of work, so we need to make our voices heard. And we may have our own climate action plan, but we need to let Congress know that, how we feel. I think, living in California, they often know how we feel, but it's good to put it in writing, so I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Councilmember Donahue?
I'm amazed that there is a caucus in Congress that I've heard about that has 36 Republicans joining the Democrats on this issue. That is remarkable to learn this, and I'm shocked, and pleasantly surprised, is all I can say, that we are potentially very close to having some real action. That's what I'm hearing, and I'm starting to believe it.
Thank you. Councilmember Pats?
I'll just echo what my colleague said, and thank you guys for your work. I appreciate it, and those 36 and 36 are working on a couple of other things as well. They're the reasonable members, so I'm not surprised to hear that, so I'll leave it at that.
And I just want to echo my colleague's sentiments, and Trish reached out to me about this. It was a no-brainer for the Sustainability Committee, Ally and I, and I think you've heard now, it's not hard for any of us up here. We take great pride in having a very strong climate action plan. We owe it to people like former Councilmember Jennifer West, who helped with that, sitting right next to someone there. And, you know, sustainability is really important for our community. We're very susceptible to sea level rise. We experienced some of the worst air pollution in the Bay Area, and so although, I think to Councilmember Martinez's point, although we are doing our part, it's important that we let other people know how important it is for all of us to do our part. And so I will also be supporting this resolution. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Medina and a second from Member Donahue to approve the resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye, it's approved. Thank you for coming. Item 12.3 is the East Bay Community Energy Product Choice. Andrew and Nancy.
You get Nancy.
Nancy.
I'll be both of us.
All right.
Where's my mousepad? Oh, all right.
So there are two items for the members of public at home. There are two items here. The item 12.3.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville requesting East Bay Community Energy to enroll all City of Emeryville municipal accounts in Brilliant 100, which we'll learn about here in a minute. And the second is to a resolution requesting that the city enroll all Emeryville commercial, industrial, and institutional accounts in Brilliant 100, as the default electricity product for the city.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, I'm Nancy Humphrey, the Environmental Program Supervisor, and I'm here with this item. I would like to note that we have a representative of East Bay Community Energy, the Senior Manager for Account Services, Dan LeRemez, here, so if we have technical questions, I'm sure he'll be able to help us with those. I note that we do have some members of the business community here as well, so I believe they put in speaker cards. So this...
Before, if you did not put in, I only have one speaker card, so if you're looking to speak, there's, where are the speaker cards?
Shing.
Oh, there they are. You can just get a speaker card, put your name on it, and then I'll know to call you up. Thank you.
Okay, so this is East Bay Community Energy. This is about the rollout of municipal and commercial accounts. We're not talking about residential accounts tonight. As you see, there are two different resolutions, so you can consider those two sets of accounts separately. This is so wordy, but I just want to be sure everyone's sort of clear on all the definitions, because there is a lot of lack of clarity out there, and... because there is a lot of lack of clarity out there, and it's important. So, East Bay Community Energy is a community choice aggregation or community choice energy entity. You hear CCA or CCE, and those can be used interchangeably. Cities and counties form joint powers agreements to develop and/or purchase power. And the goals are to provide cleaner, lower GHG-emitting power, providing competitive stable rates, and developing more renewable energy sources. Specifically, in our case, we've got a very high premium on local sources. The local utility, in our case PG&E, still transmits and delivers the power. They do, they maintain the power lines, they do the billing, they handle service requests and emergencies. So, the EBCE part is not particularly visible to the customer. It's on your bill, but your bill still comes from PG&E, and you still call PG&E in any kind of service need. This EBCE includes all the cities in Alameda County with the exception of three. City of Alameda has its own utility, so it's not eligible. Cities of Newark and Pleasanton opted out. Everybody else is in it. There's a lot of information, but basically it shows the brown ones are already operational CCEs, the green ones are launching this year, including ours, blue are in process. So you can see this is something that's really sweeping California. We're kind of right in the middle of it. EBCE is just going to start service this June with municipal and commercial accounts and industrial accounts. In fall, the residential accounts will come. And any consideration of the rate setting for them will be later. I just really want to make this clear. The Phase 1 rollout, no request is being made about residential service tonight. So, what goes into the rates are the costs of power generation and procurement, which is the EBCE part, and the power transmission, power line maintenance, billing, and some other things, including the power charge and difference adjustment, which is the magical extra cost that PG&E charges customers that leave their service. As far as I know, that actual amount hasn't been set yet, or has it?
For 2018.
For 2018? It has, but not for 2019. So that's part of the bill, and it's all included, it's already included in the analysis of cost that you'll see. EBCE is only providing electric service at this time, so PG&E, the PG&E part of the bill, is your whole gas is included there. Doesn't, there's nothing to preclude them from getting into the gas business later, but that's not their mission at the moment. I want to, I want to address the types of power and the way that they're described. Renewable and GHG-free or carbon-free, which is kind of a shorthand way of saying GHG-free. Carbon is just one greenhouse gas. It's kind of the standard against which all are measured, so if you'll see, you'll often see a measure of X number of metric tons of carbon equivalent, right? So each gas has its own factor by which it impacts the environment, and they're all compared to carbon. So you can say carbon-free or GHG-free, and in normal conversation, they mean the same thing. But renewable and GHG-free do not mean the same thing. Renewable energy is energy from a source that doesn't get depleted. So wind, solar, tidal, those are renewable energy sources. GHG-free energy includes those sources, but includes some other sources that are not classified as renewable. In California, large hydroelectric is not classified as renewable. Then federally, it is, but here it isn't because it has other environmental costs associated with it, and it, and the use of it is an impediment, more or less, to the development of true renewable energy. So it's dissuaded, discouraged in California, and it's not counted as renewable, but it is greenhouse gas-free. I just also wanted to note that nuclear power is part of PG&E's GHG power mix, but it is not part of EBCE's. Why is GHG-free power important? Well, our guests on the last item did a good job of explaining how, what it means to the community. GHGs are a primary cause of climate change. Emeryville and the state of California both have goals to reduce our GHG emissions as a community by 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. So that's a pretty big lift, and getting rid of fossil fuels is a huge part of it. Fossil fuels have other risks associated with them, including health risks, and it's, I just thought it was time to point out again, that Emeryville has the second-highest rate in California of asthma hospitalizations. And, yeah, you can say that's partly due to the freeway, probably, and that is probably true, but as we transition to electric vehicles, we can't produce the power we use to fuel electric vehicles with fossil fuels up the line. It doesn't help us. So getting fossil fuels out of the mix is important. Why is renewable energy important? Well, EBCE has a program goal of 100% renewable energy. It's GHG-free, it can be more local, which increases resiliency, and it can produce local employment opportunities. Increased investment in renewable sources helps move the market, right? So the more people buy the solar panels or the wind turbines, the price can come down and make it more affordable for all. So we want to help move that market. Local development of renewable sources is a priority for EBCE. A local development business plan is actively being designed and written, which is focused on local development of renewables. Four webinars have already been held on that, and there's a community engagement symposium this coming Monday in Oakland. But the local renewable energy is not yet developed. It's not here yet, so EBCE can't launch with 100% renewable product. What they are offering is two products. One is called Brilliant 100, and one is called Bright Choice. The Brilliant 100 is 100% GHG-free. Bright Choice is 85% GHG-free. The difference in price is about 0.75% on a bill typically, on the electric part of a bill, not the gas part. PG&E and Brilliant Choice are at the same price point, I mean, I'm sorry, Brilliant 100 and PG&E are at the same price point. Bright Choice has that small discount, which, if you have a large bill, that can be a large discount. That's worth noting. PG&E's renewable share of their portfolio goes up every year, and it's been going up pretty fast. And so we think Bright Choice will be comparable. Could be better, could be a little worse, will be, I think comparable in GHG emissions to PG&E. What, one advantage to the Bright Choice is that it doesn't have the nuclear. I mean, I see that as an advantage. For our municipal accounts, the cost to us per year was $311,153. It would be the same with PG&E or the Brilliant 100 product. It would be about $2,000 less with the Bright Choice product. For the Brilliant 100, we would save 22% of our municipal GHG emissions. I gotta say, that is the cheapest way we're ever gonna get that kind of, that's $5.35 per metric ton. We, if we could get all of our GHGs out of our municipal operations at that cost, it would cost us $9,000, and we'd be done. It's, it's an excellent opportunity for a small price. The impact on our goals would be a 22% decrease in municipal GHG emissions, and as I said, I already covered some of this. Bright Choice might be about the same as PG&E, might be better, might be a little worse. So I'm recommending on the, on the resolution regarding municipal electrical accounts that we default, we choose to default to the Brilliant 100. Before I go on to commercial, do you have any questions?
I have a generic, well, no, I don't have a question. I'll wait.
Okay.
Go ahead. Other members have questions? Chris, please correct me. Continue.
Okay. So, commercial energy. Now, just, just recently, EBCE determined that they could give communities the opportunity to default their commercial accounts within their city boundaries to the Brilliant 100 product. So this has been sort of a quick turnaround for us, but if all commercial electric accounts in Emeryville were GHG-free, we would reduce our community GHG emissions by 30.6% over our baseline levels. Our goal by 2030 is 40%. This is a huge hit, a huge positive hit. And Brilliant 100 is the same price that they're paying now for PG&E. They have every opportunity, well, they have, I'll clarify that in a minute, to opt down to the Bright Choice if they prefer, if that discount is persuasive to their business, or to opt back out to PG&E, which would be at the same price that they would be paying for the Brilliant 100. For, and here's, here's the same thing. So if, if commercial accounts were defaulted to Brilliant 100, they would be paying the same as they do for their PG&E. They would have, we would, as a community, have a 30.6% decrease in our GHG emissions. They could choose to go to Bright Choice, there would be no, or an undetermined but not significant, I believe, discount, decrease in GHG emissions, but they could have a 0.75, roughly 0.75% discount on their total bill. Again, they will, they will have every opportunity to choose which of these, which is just the question of which one do they get automatically enrolled in. Everybody will be automatically enrolled in one of EBCE's products. Customers will receive a minimum of four notices to help them customize their service and instructions on how to opt down or out if they want. They can opt between the two EBCE products at any time. There are some rules about when you could go between EBCE and PG&E. You could do it within the first 60 days and come back to EBCE at any time. If you wait after that, there's a waiting period before you could come back to EBCE. So it's just a way to sort of stabilize, stabilize the consumer base for the companies. For customers with solar, with net energy metering, EBCE is going to be rolling them in in January and addressing their rates then. Is that accurate?
Over the course of the year.
Over the course, right, at the time. So if you have a net metering account, there's a point during the year when you true-up, when you get sort of, you balance your budget with PG&E. When that time comes for you, your, each customer, that's when EBCE would, would address those rates. Between Chad Smalley, the Economic Development Manager, and myself, we've reached out to over 100 Emeryville businesses in the past week or so. We included the largest 50 by number of employees, as well as a number of small businesses. We didn't receive any negative comments. We may hear from people today who have concerns. We did invite everybody to come tonight. A handful of positive comments were received. The cities of Hayward and Albany have already chosen to default all of their commercial customers to Brilliant 100. Other cities are considering doing so, but given the short timeframe to get this moving, which I appreciate Council's assistance with in this case, nobody's gonna do it by the deadline besides Hayward, Albany, and perhaps Emeryville. So my recommendation is to default commercial electrical accounts to this Brilliant 100. It would reduce, potentially reduce our community GHG emissions by up to 30%. Businesses would pay the same rate, and they could opt down to the lower-priced product or out to PG&E either before, within the first 60 days of service, or, or after that. So I don't, to me, it feels like a way for the community to contribute to our GHG efforts without having to take extra measures to do so. And if that doesn't work for their business, they will have the opportunity to opt down to a cheaper product. So that's what I, that's what I've got.
Thank you, Nancy. Members, do you have questions?
No.
I just have one question, which is, we received a letter about a late submission. I don't know who the East Bay Green Power Alliance is, but I'm just curious. I noticed that you had diligently highlighted through your slideshow in red.
Yeah.
That the prices are equal. Do you wish to respond to the claim that they're not?
Well, I can say, I'd like to say that that group has been instrumental in, in working with the EBCE board to get it to do the most it can do, and so I consider them allies in this effort. I think that letter was aimed primarily at the residential market, and that's not what we're considering tonight. It also, it also expresses their desire to get to 100% renewable, which EBCE shares. It's just not possible at a market level right now, so I don't disagree with that wish. And, and perhaps you'd like to ask the EBCE representative about, about that. So I think the letter is something to consider if, if residential comes before you.
Okay.
But I do think that's a whole different animal.
Okay. I have no more questions. We'll open this to public comment. Thank you, Nancy. I have two speaker cards that we've received. The first is Jennifer West. Speakers will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Bowers and council members. I'm here because I'm kind of passionate about this topic, and since 2012, I've been working on reducing greenhouse gas emissions through the transportation and housing elements, and Emeryville has taken great strides in that way. And then since last year, I work on energy programs in Alameda County and also throughout the region. I have been watching EBC's efforts, attending many of their board meetings, and I'm very excited that we're here on the threshold, actually, of the launch of their work. And thanks to Diane Martinez, who I see at the board meetings, who serves on the board, and I've seen Scott Donahue there as well. I'm excited about the Brilliant 100, this 100% greenhouse gas-free option that is, is an option for Emeryville to consider tonight for opting up, as you would, for the defaults for both municipal and commercial accounts. Emeryville is special. We know that. We know that 80% of our land use is commercial and not residential, and this seems like such a great opportunity for Emeryville specifically. Albany and Hayward have taken the step already, but it's even more critical in a place where the commercial accounts are so significant. Not only would it make huge impact on our climate action plan goals here, but really, it's the right thing to do for the world. It's not just about our climate action plan goals. If you remember, the bigger goal is much larger than that. There are some folks who would opt out or opt up. Even if you chose the lower level, folks would opt up, but I've seen those numbers, and they're small. They tend to be around 6% of people who change. So your decision, to me, is critical as to what the majority of folks will be, will be doing and what, which type of mix they will be using for their electricity. It's not perfect. I look forward to when there's 100% renewable option from EBCE, but right now, the 100% greenhouse gas-free is the right thing to do for our planet, for Emeryville, and enroll all the municipal and commercial accounts to Brilliant 100. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I look forward to next Monday, where we're spending all day looking at the local development business plan for EBCE as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Todd Taylor.
Hi. I'm a facility manager down the street at Griffles, and I think we're probably one of the largest energy consumers in the city. I actually don't have any questions pertaining to the EBC as it relates to the City of Emeryville's plan. I have just a lot of questions for EBCE as it relates to industrial and commercial accounts. So, you know, I support you and your choice on this, and I'll just talk to EBC directly.
That's great. And so if you would please help make a contact with him before he leaves, so he can speak to you directly, we would appreciate that. Thank you. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for discussion. I'd like to begin with Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. So on its surface, well, first of all, let me get one thing out of the way. I 100% support defaulting our municipal accounts to the Brilliant 100 product. I think that's... product. I think that's a no-brainer. I think that's a really easy thing that we can do and get a great amount of benefit towards our greenhouse gas reduction goals. When we start talking about our commercial accounts, I think it, I think things get a little muddier. So while I, I definitely support getting us to a place where everyone is doing more to reduce greenhouse gases, I think that this, this is a really tricky way to do it in talking with E B C E staff and monitoring what's been happening in Hayward and Albany and other cities. While a 6% opt-out, and let me be clear, we don't have a lot of data on opt-outs because nobody has really done a default of this type of product on this large of a scale. So nobody's done this before. So we have very anecdotal evidence. And when you do this with commercial accounts, and here in a city where we have very large commercial accounts, that could be of consequence to E B C E, you know, that 6% could be meaningful. It's not a small amount to me. So what I'm looking at is a possible threat to the success of the program in the form of opt-outs. We're looking at a backend that wasn't designed for this default. And Dan, please correct me if I'm saying anything out of my lane. You know, we set up a system on a very, Dan's only been employed with E B C E for a very short time, but it probably feels like a lifetime. But we've really been running very fast towards our goal of Phase 1 and Phase 2 launches. So I don't know how much sleep you get. You look well-rested. But we're moving very quickly towards these targets. And from the backend design and all of the consultants that we work with and the marketing materials that are out there, everything has been designed so folks can opt up for that premium experience. So this gives me pause to suggest that we could very easily just move our commercial over to the default product. It's something I do want to happen, but I have concerns. My other concerns are, as I expressed, in the marketing realm, we have gone out to the public and we said, we're going to procure energy for you, and it's going to be cleaner and greener. Okay, we've met that end of the bargain. And we've said it's going to be cheaper. And we have gone to great length to share this message with the community. And if we change the default on the commercial accounts, we need to change our message. And that's a message that's already out there. These are meetings that Dan has already had with many business members in our community. That gives me pause. So that's, there's the public trust in the message that we've given them. And then there's the money spent, which this letter from E B, East Bay Clean Power Alliance talks about all of the administrative support costs that would be different. So it's true, this letter, I'll just explain this to my colleagues because it was like kind of a lengthy letter. It is mostly centered around residential default, but when it comes to the administrative effect, that, that will come into play with the commercial default as well, is what I'm trying to say. And Dan, I see nodding there, so he, it looks like he agrees with my assessment of the situation. So that's a very complicated way to say that I do want everyone to be at Brilliant 100, but I don't want to force them in the commercial sector. So what I would offer as a kind of middle ground is that, and I've talked to Councilmember Donahue about this, that we're interested in going out there to the top users in our community. And I know that there's been a lot of communication between Nancy and Chad, and thank you for that, for reaching out to, to the business community, because it's going to make this much easier when we walk in the door and we say, this is, let's go online and opt you up, because you expressed an interest in, in doing your part. Let's make this happen. And that actually gets us around all of the, and I don't even know how to describe the backend that Sacramento Municipal Utility District has created, ready to take on all of these customers at, at the, not the Brilliant 100, but the other default product. So that's a very long way of short, saying that I support defaulting the municipal accounts to Brilliant 100, but waiting on the other resolution, not, not changing that default product for the time being.
Okay. Councilmember Donahue.
I'm the alternate for this committee, and so I've been involved in this intermittently. And so I've seen the development of this C E E, and this is a challenge to start from scratch. And it requires becoming a energy purchasing organization relatively quickly. We have, as a group, had to borrow money from Alameda County in order to start this process. We can't afford to alienate our business community, and we've said to them that we could offer something cheaper. And I support the municipal approach of doing the Brilliant 100, but I think the Bright Choice should be offered to our commercial sector, and I'm willing to do the homework. I'm willing to go business-to-business in our community and try to persuade them to opt up as opposed to just say, here, choose this. It's the same price. We're deciding for you. This could alienate some of our business community. And I think that we need to do local marketing of Brilliant 100 to get better compliance. And I think for the long, for the long run, we are going to be more successful to take this approach. So I concur with what Diane says. I think it's important that we really walk this through our commercial sector, business by business, and make sure that they feel included in this, and make sure that they want to choose what they're going to choose on purpose, and not risk alienating them, and just have them come along and support our energy purchasing group.
Councilmember Pats?
I want to thank the hard work that was put in by staff and echo what Member Martinez was saying. And, you know, I'm in support of moving forward in a measured and thoughtful way.
Okay. Oh, you have more?
Nope.
Oh. Vice Mayor Medina?
Yeah. Honestly, because of Brown Act, the only person I've talked to about this is Mayor Bowders, because we were presented this at Sustainability, and I'm not going to lie, I was 100% in favor of having both municipal and commercial accounts automatically being Brilliant Choice 100. And I do deeply respect and have served on Sustainability with Member Martinez, and so I'm frankly really surprised. And that's, this is the beauty of the Brown Act. We're having a robust public discussion about this. I'm really surprised, and I'm not quite convinced of your argument. I, you know, heard this, only 6% of people opt up when I think of Clean Power S F. I know it's much harder to get people to opt up than to opt down. In any sort of ballot measure or like situation where consumers are asked to choose, if you give them the best option, that generally tends to work out best. And we asked staff to do due diligence, reached out to the business community, and they hustled on it. And I was really appreciative of their efforts there and did hear that we didn't, I haven't received any negative feedback from the business community on this. So I came here today inclined to fully support it. I could be talked out of it if you have more information that I don't have, because I know you've been involved in this for a very long time.
Is that your interview comments?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm inclined to be where Member Medina is, and it's not just because we were in the same meeting together. I actually asked all these questions of Nancy at that meeting. I was really concerned that we, had we properly noticed the commercial property community. I think I gave Nancy a deposition, more or less, on like, what have we done?
Long meeting ever.
And long meeting to talk about this component of it. There was no question on the municipal side for me, but I really wanted to make sure that we had done outreach and substantial outreach. And I want to thank Nancy for your work, and Chad as well, for reaching out to the community. And you did do what we asked, and we did receive all neutral and positive feedback. And so I'm very satisfied that this is the right thing to do myself. And so that's where I'll be this evening, one way or the other. So with that, on item 12.3, is there any other discussion?
I'd love a chance to respond.
Please do.
You pull them up.
To the Vice Mayor. So for me, yeah, it is, it's surprising, and it's difficult. Like, knowing where I stand, having served with you on Sustainability, I think you know where my values are. But in creating this J P A and creating this C C E, this new entity, I have to look at the bigger picture. Is it feasible? Is it going to survive? Are we, do we have a strong foundation to start bringing in the income that we need to pay back our debts? We have no credit. Or maybe we're, maybe we just got credit. We have lofty goals, and I share all of the goals that are in the J P A to get us to 100% renewable, for instance. But sometimes you have to move in a measured manner in order to get to all of those goals that you need. And Nancy, once, you know, when we've talked about this in the past, we've talked about, and in getting to 100% renewable product, we've talked, I love the way that you said, we're drawing the bow for future action. So whereas I agree, it would be very nice to be in a place where we can and should have a Brilliant 100 product, I, I feel that this move could potentially threaten our successful Phase 1 launch. But I'd love to have Dan come up and just speak to, you know, I threw out, I'm fear mongering here, and I need a staff member to actually back me up to let me know, like, do I, am I speaking out of place?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm Dan Lieberman with East Bay Community Energy. And, you know, I guess there are a few things that I'd say. One is, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. We're, you know, allowing local jurisdictions to make the decision that they wish to make. Another point I want to make that Nancy just reminded me of is that our board is meeting tomorrow night to review the cities that are making the decision to have Brilliant 100 as the default option. And there is a possibility that they vote to not support that. And I know Councilmember Martinez, I'm assuming you'll be there. I don't know. I can't remember who confirmed or not, but that's another, just something to be aware of. And then, I guess, finally, my previous employer was Peninsula Clean Energy, which is the C C A that serves San Mateo County. And to my knowledge, they have the only jurisdiction that had a city that started with a premium product as the default. The town of Portola Valley elected to have a premium-priced product, one that was more expensive than P G and E as the default. But they're also a very tiny, and mainly residential, and very wealthy community. So, you know, different, a lot different than.
And what was their opt-out rate for that tiny, very wealthy community?
It was actually twice the opt-out rate of any other town. So even in that town, paying a small premium was viewed negatively. But it was only a 6% opt-out rate for a C C A that had only a 2% opt-out rate, so 98% participation rate countywide, and 94% in Portola Valley.
Are there any further questions for Dan?
No.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a sort of a question and a comment. You know, I've been at board meetings when energy providers come forward to the board and say, look what we can do for you. And there is just lots of new, potentially Alameda County and/or surrounding county, energy that will be available in the future. Like, for example, there is a wind farm that said they have property that they have options on, that the wind blows when the wind is not blowing at the Altamont Pass. So in other words, Altamont Pass blows, you have a huge surge of renewable energy. Then the wind stops, and then the grid has got to take over, and power has to come from elsewhere. But this demonstration of wind blowing the opposite, statistically speaking, you know, not at all times, but most of the time, you know, this, these are the kind of things that our energy buying group can encourage in the future. But it is risky from that, the wind providers' point of view. They're trying to get people to buy, to sign up to buy this. It's hard, I mean, P G and E isn't signing up that I know of to buy that power from them because it's kind of small, local. We could do that in the future. But I think we need the, the opt-in rate to be high enough, and we need people who have been marketed to that it's cheaper. This is what they hear about C E Es elsewhere around the state. Commercial accounts here, oh, it's slightly cheaper to go. If you're buying a lot of power, do you want to try something new with a new C C E, or do you want to just stick with P G and E? You know, most businesses, like, well, if it's the same price, mine will stay with P G and E. Or, you know, there's a natural not think about it rate. And I think that if we do our marketing in the city, going to our, you know, really, I think we can get a high opt-in rate, and I think we can eventually get a much higher greenhouse gas reduction with our businesses buying on, when they see that we're functioning well as a buying group. So that's, that's my pitch for doing what Councilmember Martinez.
Hold on one second. Let me see if there's any other questions or comments before we invite Nancy back up?
Nope.
No? Okay, thank you, Dan. Nancy, come on up.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion. The one comment I want to make is about that administrative concern, is that tonight is about what Emeryville wishes. And the administrative concern is and will be determined tomorrow at the E B C E board. So if that is a preventive for them, that's, that can be addressed tomorrow regardless of the wishes of Emeryville. Just want to make that clarification.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, members, any other discussion? Item 12.3.1 is a resolution that regards the City of Emeryville's municipal accounts with the recommendation from staff enrolling us in Brilliant 100. So this applies only to municipal properties. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion from Member Martinez and a second from Vice Mayor Medina to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez?
Aye.
Councilmember Pats?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. Item 12.3.2 is a resolution that proposes to enroll the commercial, industrial, and institutional accounts of the City of Emeryville's properties in Brilliant 100. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Donahue?
No.
Councilmember Martinez?
No.
Councilmember Pats?
No.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes.
And Mayor Bowders.
Aye. The motion fails. I'll entertain a new motion.
Do we have to have a new motion? It's just, there's a resolution.
Oh, that's true. It's a resolution, so we can take no action. If no council member wishes to make a motion, I'll entertain five seconds, five seconds of silence. Because you always end up being the guy who says there's no motion, and then someone, I want to make a motion. So five seconds of silence here constitutes no motions. Okay, item 12.3.2, staff direction. There's no action on that item tonight. Moving on to item 13. For item 13, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question before I ask to begin this item. I believe I'm recused from B if there is any discussion from the council or questions. And so what I'd like to ask for your guidance on, Mr. City Attorney, can I instruct or ask the planning director to only report on A and C at this time, take any questions, comments from members? And then may I turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor to discuss B and have the director's report do B?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So Charlie, could you just report on A and C first, please?
Certainly. This is my, actually, this is not my regular report. This is my report on the special meeting that the Planning Commission held last Thursday, March 15th. I would note that Commissioner Banta has resigned, so we currently have six commissioners. Chair Donaldson and Commissioner Kang had excused absences from the March 15th meeting, so we barely had a quorum. We had four commissioners present. They considered three items that are listed here. I will report on the first and the third item. The Emery Go-Ran Temporary Fleet parking was approved on a four to nothing vote. That will be at the Rifkin Lot on Horton Street. That will be at the Rifkin Lot on Horton Street, the Novartis Lot. And that is a two-year conditional use permit, so it will expire on April 15 of 2020. This decision is appealable to the City Council, and the appeal deadline is next Friday, March 30. The 5850 Shell Monway Mixed-Use Project was continued to a future meeting. That was to be a study session, and that study session's been continued to a future meeting, so they didn't hear that item.
Okay, members, on item A, it's appealable to the City Council. Any members of the City Council wish to call for review of item A? Seeing none, I'm going to be recused for the report on B.
Okay.
Go for it.
The second item that the commission considered was an amendment to the Sherwin-Williams PUD to allow the removal of 11 street trees on the west side of Horton Street, finding the project site, in order to accommodate the trenching that's needed to underground the overhead utilities. The commission also approved a tree removal permit for those 11 trees that will be contingent upon the City Council's approval of the PUD amendment. That PUD amendment is scheduled to come to you for first reading of the ordinance on April 17. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions?
I have questions. Those trees are beautiful that are there on Horton Street. And new trees tend to be small. For me to accept the loss of those mature trees is kind of devastating for our neighborhood to go back to lollipop trees. It's just, with our old industrial neighborhood, those trees really make a difference. The, keeping those trees seems important to me and my neighborhood. And I just want to see if there's a way that we can do that.
Vice Mayor Medina, may I respond to this?
You may.
This item will be coming to you for a public hearing on April 17. So you'll certainly have an opportunity to hear all the evidence and express your feelings about it at that time. I would encourage you to wait until you hear the staff presentation before you make any kind of a decision on this.
Okay.
I would note that it's a trade-off between trees on the east side of the street versus trees on the west side of the street. In the opinion of the city arborist, wherever the joint trench is put, it is going to impact the trees, and we will probably lose some or all of them. The joint trench must be put under the sidewalk, so it will either be put under the sidewalk on the west side of the street or under the sidewalk on the east side of the street, endangering the trees on either side, wherever it's put. On the east side of the street, there are about 30 trees that are bigger and healthier than the ones on the west side. On the west side of the street, there are 11 trees. It's likely we're going to lose them on one side or the other. But again, it would be, I would advise you to wait until you hear the full staff presentation on April 17.
Okay, I recognize that that's what I'm going to do, but accepting that the trenching has to be done under the sidewalk is something that I'm going to have to be, really have to be persuaded about. You know, PG&E doesn't get to control the entire street. They have gas lines in various places with electrical underground. You get my drift.
Yes.
I think we had another question from Member Martinez.
I just wanted to know if the planning commissioners were of one mind, or if there was a majority opinion, and if you could summarize.
Oh, I'm sorry if I didn't say so. The vote on the Sherwin, you're talking about the Sherwin-Williams?
Yeah, yeah.
Item. The vote on that was 4 to 0.
Okay.
And they were all in support of the recommendation to amend the PUD.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Member Pats? All right, so this will be coming to us on April 17.
That item will be coming to you on the 17th.
Okay. Let's move on to item C.
I already reported on item C.
Oh, item C, item, well, whatever's next. Flip this over. You're done.
I'm done.
Bye, Charlie.
Thank you. Item 14, future agenda item requests from council members. Are there any? No, seeing none?
Oh, yes.
Yes, there is. See, this is why you do the five-second pause.
Five seconds of awkward pausing. I would like to potentially, I would like to consider giving staff direction to ask for electric bike options under pursuit to our current bike-share agreement at the next meeting. So considering that.
Can I make a friendly amendment to that?
What?
Can we go electric bike and electric scooters? I don't know if you've seen the Lime scooters.
Okay, I mean, I feel, I have personal prejudice against that, but I will consider it.
Okay, so, no, go ahead.
We're bringing up this topic. Can we just get an update on whether our, the vendor that we have an agreement with is considering Docless bikes?
Can we ask for all of that to be updated and discussed at the next meeting?
So I think, I'm going to ask staff, but I'm going to presume, because staff reports are due for the next council meeting by Friday, it's probably more likely that we could ask for two meetings out, if that's okay?
Yep.
Is that, would you would agree, staff?
Yes.
Over the flowers? Yes, they're agreeing. Is that okay with you?
That's fine. Michael and I already talked about this, though.
Michael, do you, are you proposing to meetings?
Okay, fine, two meetings.
No, if Michael's telling you that you can do it next meeting, to, if you want, yeah. There's a staff debate now, so.
The scooters are willing to wait three meetings, just so you know.
They can keep waiting.
If the Vice Mayor can wait for the April 17 meeting, they will be able to give you a more comprehensive report, which includes some of the other information, which I'm hearing the other council members are asking for as well.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay. Is there a majority support to do that?
Yes.
Yes, you have staff direction. The time is 9:32. The meeting is adjourned.